Regular board meeting, the West Valley School Board. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during the agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comments section of the meeting. Citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate any statement where appropriate, including when statements are out of order, too lengthy, breach of personal privacy rights, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. So stand up for your audience. Going to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the of the approval of the agenda and approval of the minutes of prior meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
The consent agenda. I think we need to.
Approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, the whole consent agenda.
And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on the post-executive session, we're in that meetings. Starting meeting minutes, there is, we know documentation of what actual votes occurred during that session. There was a motion and a second, but no, no recording of what votes were.
It said the motion passed, I think, which is oftentimes in our, in our, when we, when we vote, we often say the most, the motion passed. Yeah.
And then according to policy and state law, we have to actually have records of what individual trustees voted.
But we don't for any of the other motions.
We'd have to change all the other minutes, too.
Because we don't for the other, when we.
Actually, there is comments on other agenda, agenda meeting minutes of each individual vote, or the vote being recorded as unanimous, or the votes being this person voted this way or that way. So if you look at the April 10 minutes, yeah, all trustee vote, trustees voted in favor. Look at the consent agenda, all trustees voted in favor, doesn't say that. All trustees voted in favor. Look at the meeting minutes on 410, it does, too. Look under the consent agenda, it says trustee Meredith motion to approve, trustee Bowles seconded, motion passed. That's not the correct way of doing it. So all the other ones say what the trustee voted.
We don't.
What's there to hide? Are we hiding things?
No, we're not having anything at all. There were three board members that were at that meeting when we pulled out of the meeting because because two had excuse themselves and those three board members voted to pass that motion. And so we just said the motion passed.
It was just copied from previous minutes, is my understanding, because I do look back, most of them do say that, but I mean, doesn't bother me if you, if we want to make a motion based on editing that to who voted.
Or the votes who passed, you know.
Well, it definitely says that. Myself and Gretchen abstain from the vote, but it does not say what other people's votes were, whether or not it was unanimous, whether it was.
The motion carried, that would mean that myself and Jeff and Marilyn that we would have voted for it.
Well, at least.
Well, that actually doesn't say that. It just says that a majority of the votes carried.
It says two out of the three voted, at least two of the three voted right for it, because the only three, right?
Asking for it to be clarified. I don't see why this is an issue unless you guys have stuff to hide.
No, I'm fine clarifying that.
So if we want to put unanimously in there, or if we want to put the three names voted.
Nobody was there, so only the three of you were there, so you're recording about what the votes were.
Are we allowed to make a statement about it, about the closed session? Like, I've personally gotten criticism from the public as to not, as to leaving it, and I would like to clarify why I left the meeting, since it's not in the minutes or recorded.
I wonder if we had the executive session because of personal private, privacy rights. So I think if we were to go into it now and discuss what happened in that executive session, then it would be violating the privacy rights, the reason why we went into executive session to start with Gretchen. I think, and I understand where you're coming from, but I think that it would be violating that the privacy rights, which is why we went into that executive session to begin.
Well, I don't think that are standing from a vote that happened in an open meeting after the fact is breaking any privacy. As long as we're not mentioning what occurred actually within that meeting that has to do with the personnel and question.
I, I think I would just like the meeting minutes to show that I left the meeting because I did not think that there should be any vote regarding that. Within 30 minutes of me finding out about it, I just felt like it was inappropriate and a violation. And I didn't want anything to do with it. And I think that just showing that only three people were there does not accurately reflect to the taxpayers why two people weren't there, or the April 19th meeting, which we were not informed of.
You guys weren't informed of the April 19th meeting.
I only found out when I received an agenda. I was never told there was a meeting and I only randomly checked the West Valley email.
Which is not what our policy states in a special board meeting is actually, we're supposed to be individually informed of that board meeting and to the reason why in our policy and by state law. And by state law, and an agenda was sent out that is not informed in writing or by person. Sorry, Jeff, gonna argue with you about that one.
The email is right.
Is it? Okay. You go with that one. You go with that one. You go with that one. Um, it also states by public law and by policy that any trustee has the right to abstain from a vote if they feel that it is not legal, or if it goes against their own personal ethics, that policy, anyway, I can get it to people that like that, so. But I think it's reasonable to reflect. That's why Gretchen and I refrained from voting in this case, and certainly her concern about her own personal feelings on how much time she had to process that I think is reasonable to be reflected as well.
So that could be known as in, in the executive, as correcting those executive meetings to, to explain.
Since I do not have a copy of the executive meeting minutes, I do have something to submit to seal or to seal an envelope for that one to go into that as well. It's a statement from my.
Think you could just update it on the, on the public thing. On these minutes that we just dropped the motion, new and new motion that you want to add exactly who voted to those minutes.
The April 10 needs to get something added as well. Okay, consent agenda.
April 10.
Yeah, it doesn't, it just says motion passed as well.
And actually, like, under approval bill that does give us new thing that says trustee will motion approved, here in a second, motion passed, so. Which is almost the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one. 410, under approval bills. Yes, at the end, it says motion passed unanimously, which one? And we just make a motion to approve the consent agenda with changes to the minutes to make sure that votes are documented. A lot of motions.
Yeah, for a fact. I'll second that. So that would be going to.
Motion in a second. On the April 24th meeting. Yes, this is just me nitpicking because I feel that it potentially is important that there was no mention of trustee Meredith making a comment about the superintendent during that section and myself reminding that that type of information should be withheld until personal privacy in executive session type meeting could be held about those things. See, so it says trustee Meredith seconded, trustee Meredith said the board had misunderstood or misinformation at the previous meeting, letting discuss. That is not what was said. What was said was that the board was misinformed by the superintendent at that point, which I reminded that that information is confidential and should be withheld for the executive session. It says misinformation. Pretty much the same thing, except for it doesn't say by the superintendent, like you stated. Right. We, I find saying that, because I think it's appropriate to, not the statement was appropriate, watch the videos.
And we did come back at it and say that, you know, that the, the board was not discussing personnel, it was just inappropriate to say it that.
Do you have anything else on those minutes before we do drop it again? Or we could do it in two different motions, leave the one on the table for those two.
I'm fine with it, I changed it.
I mean, it's recorded, so anybody, I mean, they can go back and watch it, too. So you put that in the minutes, so we also, so we need to change April 10. So April 10. The correction to the consent agenda and the votes. And then, and I would say on all of them, you should update all of them on who they all voted. Then April 24. Statement from trustee Meredith to correct that one, and then the post-session minutes, so that one needs to be changed to this one there.
You want.
Unanimously. And then also adding Gretchen's. Oh, yes, Gretchen's. So I'll make a motion on the approval, besides the changes we discussed with Cecilia on the April 10, on the consent agenda overall.
I'll second.
Any, any more discussion? I, I was in favor.
I.
Anybody opposed? So unanimously. Oh, Gretchen. Did you, your name is it? Approval of bills for April summary and April approval list.
So this is that second email that went out for the claims summary, right?
I didn't realize it was.
No worries, I just wanted to make sure I have the right spot. Thank you. Appreciate it. So can you remind me what proper life today is?
That was the that was the love and logic class that was approved that Terry did the parenting and all this gap.
Yeah, thank you. The adult education fund. And answer. I'll make a motion to approve the bills. Second.
Is there any discussion? I, I was in favor, I, I, I was unanimously. Correspondence, yes, public participation, except we have two people who are wanting to speak. So we got our timers, Cecilia and you. Looks like Dan Nelson is the first to speak.
Yeah, it wasn't really a timer, so I'll try to use.
It's two minutes, four, okay, four minutes.
All right, I will try my best. So after receiving a text informing me that the school levy had been canceled, I watched the April 24th board meeting to try and find out why. There I watched as a board member said they were misled by the superintendent and another said people could both go back and watch the videos. That's exactly what I did. The February 13th meeting had an action item labeled call for trustee and levy election. When that item came up, the superintendent started discussing just the trustee part. Exactly one minute later, Stephanie Hanson says, and I quote, "I'll make a motion for the trustee and levy election." Justin Bowles immediately seconds, and the school board unanimously votes in favor of running a trustee and levy election. None of you asked a single question about the levy before voting to Brian. The levy was only discussed after someone in attendance shouted out to laughter, "I have a question about the levy part." The discussion was less than two minutes and ends with a board member saying, "So long as we have this in place, we can do whatever." Another member says, "We can at least do it," and you all move on to the next item. At the next meeting on March 13th, the levy was not placed on the school board's agenda, meaning you couldn't vote on any financials or specific timing. Not that it matters, because no school board member bothered to ask a single question about any of that stuff. The superintendent brought up the levy during her report mentioning plans to communicate to the public of the school's needs, "We should have reminded you to start talking about the levy amount or to clear up any confusion you may have had about it, but instead you spent 10 minutes excitedly discussing public messaging." No one asked about dollar amounts, no one asked about dates. The next meeting is April 10th, and once again, the levy is still not on the agenda. But this time, the levy, when the levy is mentioned in the superintendent's report, members seemed concerned about the financials and the timing of the levy, which again was voted on prior to a single word of discussion about it. I assume that some words or emails were exchanged before the April 10th meeting because the superintendent came with options related to all the things the school board should have been asking about during the previous two meetings, rather than focusing on those options, but the members complained about the things they never bothered to ask about prior. None of you were denied the opportunity to be thoughtful about the levy, you just didn't take the opportunity when you had it. Now, I'm sure balls were dropped on all sides, whatever that happens. But when, then you went and made it 100 times worse by suddenly deciding to place the superintendent on leave, putting the school in an even worse situation by upending leadership and creating further uncertainty and confusion. I really hope you understand how difficult it will be finding a replacement superintendent if you fire Dr. Risher or she chooses not to come back, because any potential superintendent is going to look into what happened to the previous one. And good luck finding more teachers, pairs, and staff. Heck, I can't even begin to imagine the fear and uncertainty some existing teachers and staff must have. I don't know if you all ran for this position to save children from masks or from some woke agenda fantasy or what, but understand that when it comes to people doing the actual work, this is their job, it's their livelihood. You have done serious damage here. Lastly, I'll add that during the brief time you did engage in public messaging, you guys talked about a voter block who will support a levy no matter what. Well, I was a part of that block. I have never voted against the school levy in my entire life and never intended to do so. But in following your advice and watching the videos and seeing how you handled this and seeing how you reacted to your own mistakes by punishing someone else, that's changed. So long as this board exists in its current form, and I don't just mean organizationally, I will not vote in favor of any levy. I sincerely hope this board can find the strength to eat some crow, apologize to the superintendent, the teachers, the staff, and the community in general for the uncertainty and harm caused by both their actions and inactions. And then I hope that several of you promptly resign so we can move on, because there, you are much easier to replace than qualified teachers, staff, and a superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Okay, Melanie, you had.
I'm Melanie Runipara, I teach third grade. I just wanted to ask the board to consider allowing teachers and staff to use the building after school for things like tutoring, and then I was, I think it came up, because I had explored the idea of hosting an art camp where kids could just come after school and do some art projects and the parents could pay me. So it'd be kind of a combination childcare, art, fun time when parents could stay a bit later at school. And I know it had come up as discussion in a different meeting, and I just wanted you guys to consider doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Melanie.
Could you send us like some proposed hours that would like meet those requirements? I think that might help that decision.
Yeah, that's, that's all we had signed up for this, for the public participation. On West Valley Parent Teachers Organization Board, and Paula had a video of five guys that she had asked to, to show.
I know it'll be kind of hard for you guys to see over there. Great, so Heather and I just wanted, so both Heather and I are special education pairs and the elementary. And we wanted to kind of just share with you guys kind of things that we've done over the school year and kind of talk about the kids a little bit. So this here is our Special Olympics team with our unified partners, our unified partners that go with our students. And they're also student care, but they'll go together and do different sports and things like that. And it's really just a huge, it's a team effort to see them go out there and play and, you know, we just did our, we did our winter Olympics and our spring Olympics. We'll show you some pictures here. So this is from spring, we just did this, and the kids were able to do track and then bocce ball. So that was super fun.
This is what our shirts go to, funds our uniforms for this. And it funds for skiing, so it's, it's pretty, it's pretty huge. We do a lot of fundraising, and luckily we're in a community where you guys are really supportive of fundraising, parents and our teachers.
Oh, yeah, and we were able to see like, if, if you guys ever have the opportunity to go to one of these events, it's life-changing, like just being, whether you go there to be just as, you know, to be a volunteer, or you go there to just sit in the crowd and watch the kids. I mean, just to see, we saw so many friendships just blossom there, it was incredible, and we have like an eighth grader that's going into high school next year, and the high school students that were there came and they were like, "Come, come talk to us, come meet all of our friends, we're gonna show you, we're gonna hang out next year," and just to be able to see, you know, our students go there, you know, mix with other students and, you know, be able to do all of these things.
Just unbeatable. It is just, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody wins when they're at a special, yeah, everybody's a winner.
Yeah, and we talk a lot about, you know, filling your bucket, that's a big motto here. And, you know, going there and having, I mean, your bucket will be overflowing when you go to, to see that, it's incredible. So this next part is our Not Less at West shirt, so they're still available if anybody wants to buy one. Not saying, but, okay. Um, so here's some pictures from our staff, and this is staff with our students. Um, you know, every year we at least do one Not Less at West day. So that's everybody kind of coming together and showing support, being able to, you know, just show our shirts, and, I mean, we've got tons, I mean, pretty much everybody's wearing something to do with that. And I wanted to give a shout out on this picture here. Um, this one, this is our middle school band. And I brought our students down, we were kind of walking through, saying hi to the teachers. And we walked in there to say hi, and she brought us in and they played, and our kids loved it. It was our very favorite thing, we got to put on a show, and, and they were telling us like.
They got to sit there, they had a special seat for them to sit in and watch, yeah.
Yeah.
It was pretty.
So that is a nice thing about, you know, I mean, we are kind of, we are one big school, you know, but we're kind of doing different things. And so to have our younger kids go down and see the bigger kids is huge, it was so much fun. Here's some more of our Not Less at West day.
We also did a parade where they went through the middle school and the elementary school. And they, everybody stood outside of their classroom and threw them on, and we did that after the Winter Olympics, and we did it after spring, as well. They loved it, they needed, it was pretty, it was pretty hard more than you to see, part of them to get tears in your eyes with that.
Yeah.
Pretty amazing.
It was good. Here's a couple more. And it's just incredible just to see, you know, I mean, kindergarten to wave break, you know, I mean, we're all part of this big unified school and working together and supporting the kids, and it's just so, so amazing.
And our, our students are, they are very inclusive and they're, yeah, it's pretty amazing to watch our kids. I mean, we talk about going above and beyond in our school, but, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing, not just the kids, parents, the students, the teachers. Um, I couldn't imagine, I've never been to another school where they've done something like this, because I've only ever worked at West Valley. But I would find it pretty hard to compare to what we do, because we do a massive amount. I mean, just the show at our Five Guys was just, it was amazing, I mean, the manager was pretty impressed. He said we haven't done a, we haven't done something like that here in a long, long time. So our community, our school community, we really are uplifting and we really are, we really pull together. It is really amazing.
This one here is our, that'll go, our winter games. Thinking, our technology's thinking for us, but here should be some pictures of going up. Thinking, our technology's thinking for us, but here should be some pictures of going up for Winter Olympics. And they also came back with awesome medals and had so much fun.
They do about a month, well, probably about a month, month and a half of ski lessons. And they um, and it's every Wednesday, it's once a, it's once a week and they go and they learn how to ski with Dream Adaptive. And um, then they participate in the Winter Olympics, which we have to have. Volunteers that'll ski with them and um, luckily we've gotten volunteers to ski with them, so we've been able to. We've uh, we've gotten Mrs. Dakers volunteer this year to ski with one of our new ones. That was pretty big for him, you know, yeah.
Yeah, we've had, we have both parents and teachers that volunteer their time to. Come and help with that and I mean, it's really incredible just to see the bond that. You know, especially for like Sarah had, you know, our student in the classroom and then he gets a chance to go up and. He was on the mountain and, you know, just building that relationship is incredible.
Huge, yeah.
And then we've got our Five Guys, just a couple of pictures from Five Guys, so this is our Five Guys event that we had. And we were, yeah, we were out, pretty much out the door, they had it to the door and then background, pretty much.
Purple fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a couple hours of just incredible, everybody coming together and we even had people that were like. What, we're just here for Five Guys, like we weren't actually. Good job, good job, what you guys are doing. Um, but the kids had so much fun, you know, we were able to have. Both unified partners and our athletes there and they sell tickets and they were just greeting everyone and. You know, holding the door and engaging with the public and I think that would be incredible and just for our students to see. The community coming out for them and supporting them was huge.
Yeah.
You know, so part of this was being able to show you guys pictures and. Kind of talk about what we've been doing this year, but also to say thank you, you know, thank you for supporting our kids, you know, we wish they could be here, they would say that they.
Yeah, they would.
But, you know, just from West Valley and beyond, you know, we're just so thankful for our community.
And lunch staff too, they, they have to do our lunch when we go to the mountain. And that's not always easy because sometimes they get people that don't remind them that we're going to.
Running out of your lunch.
So it's pretty amazing too, I mean, I, it is, it's nice to see. A staff that pulls together, so maybe nice, it's, it's. I don't know, it's heartwarming, when you work in something like this, you really see it and it is really fun.
Perfect, well, thank you guys, we hope you.
Thank you. Um, now, the West Valley Teachers Organization is that. Do we have another report for them or is this? Is Paula's presentation that the West Valley Teachers Association did? The admin to be able to give a presentation on Five Guys and special. Kids, so that's what that was, but do we have something for the West Valley Teachers Organization also?
We have some things on insurance, but should we stay back till the action item?
Yes, that's an action item right on, okay, so we'll, we'll wait for that. Uh, the technology drafters report, Kat.
Hi, um, so I wanted to provide a couple of updates, so our access control is finished and in. It is leaps and bounds ahead of our old one, so the old one, in order for the office staff to be able to program the fobs was very time consuming. And this one in about forty seconds, we can have our fob. Credentials issued into the person, uh, it gives us a lot more control over. Our building, so for example, community members, their fob, if we set it in a way, they can only access our building in the community hours. Instead of before fob needs any access, if we have us to somebody who. Has a fob but doesn't return it, we can delete that credential so they can't access the building anymore. Our door down there is now officially on where it should be and closed when it should be. Um, and uh, we are working on, um, I'm working with Systems Northwest on a door jar alarm, so if any door gets like propped open after a certain time, it will notify. The principals and Phil and myself. Um, so then we can kind of add that level of security as well.
Will that be for every exterior door?
No, it only works on the doors that have.
Fobs.
The fobs, yes, um, because that's, there's no sensor lock. I do have a appointment Thursday, we're needed for Systems to Northwest to come and look at our alarm, uh, which. Uh, it's working, but it does have some faults in it, just like it'll go off at nine o'clock in the morning, we'll have to go and turn it off. Um, and so I will keep you guys private what happens with that. Oops. Um, we have Paladin Shield, um, source cybersecurity insurance. Uh, paid for all of the members of Miss Clips. To have Paladin Shield, which is this big cybersecurity that businesses can pay for and they pay for all the schools involved in it. Which is really nice, it sends out phishing training to our staff. Um, it will also uh, provides training if, like for cybersecurity and like phishing training for staff as well. Uh, I'm really excited about the phishing training because. It gives us a nice baseline of what more training do we need to provide for our staff and it does a browser protection that is one that you would have to pay for as well. So that was very, very nice, so we got that opportunity from our cybersecurity insurance. And I met with the principals and we have our Chromebook usage agreements, um, and. You guys have basically a copy of one, the last four pages. I made up this book. Last three pages of the one for the um. Tech fee is our Chromebook usage agreement, it just the. Eight through four have assigned one to one, like they are the only ones that use that Chromebook. Um, so we have a little bit more leeway with them, you know, we're offering them a. Insurance waiver, so for fifteen dollars, which is what other students do. Um, to say if there's damage to that home book and they have the insurance that they purchased, then. They don't have to pay for the damage unless it was intentional. Um, but we kind of really need to get something in place in order for us to. Continue our technology because it is very expensive. Um, and this is, I kind of combined this with Helena Public Schools and Cuyahoga Prairie, they had a very nice intensive one. And grab the ones that pertain to us. Um, so it kind of gives us and the students and the parents knowledge of. This is what we have to do with our Chromebooks, you, these are the um. Like online platforms that we use, so it provides just a little bit more information and. The fact that by signing this, that students are, and parents are acknowledging that the device will be used in school and responsible for damage to it. My, I'm short and sweet today, if you have any questions.
No, thank you. What's the time, sorry, what's the timing on, for this uh, kind of the tech fee and the Chromebook user agreement, would we get that? Try to get that in place before next school year?
Yes, so the Chromebook usage agreement is, uh. There must have been one at place sometime at West Valley, but we couldn't find it, so this would be something that would have to be signed at all my other schools, the kids actually can't access the internet. Or a computer until it's signed. Because it gives the school permission for them, those kids to access those. So these would be implemented next year, at the start of next year and it would have to be signed every single year. Because it gives us the ability to make accounts for students in various places. Um, and then the. The, of course, the middle school fee depends on what the board decides today. Uh, but the agreement itself versus for like the wording of like what are students, we're gonna carry it with two hands and all of that, that would be. Something that would be signed every year.
And so the fifteen dollars, you actually go out and buy. Insurance on the device, or is that just like a self insured?
It's a self insured, um, because it allows us to. Uh, if there is damage on a device. And parents have purchased that, then it's an easier cost for them. This is a new thing because with S R money, there hasn't really been, unless it's been easily to defined like very outright. Students haven't necessarily been charged because we had S R money. But S R money has gone and um. I have a lot of Chromebooks right now that have something wrong with them, but they still work. But they're still out there because. We can't afford to just replace them or repair them, the only ones I repair currently are ones that. Absolutely do not work and we are maxed out on devices, I have three extra ones sitting on my computer or my shelves that. The end doesn't work very well, but it will work if we lose one, but, so we're kind of, we're stretched to the max that we can possibly do. And I do, I do all the repairs for the Chromebooks myself.
Thanks, yeah, thank you. Hey, uh, here you, we're gonna enter, we're gonna take the athletic director update and move that up to. This division here, so that you'll have a chance to, to speak here um, about her. Athletic. Your part, and it's now instead of at the end.
Um, you want me to leave the discussion about the fees until that item?
Yes, but I, I just, if you wanted to give a general athletic director update, I think it might be better here with that. Other than ports, because it's.
I have a couple of, yeah, an end of year kind of summary. Well. And then some pushing. Alright, um. So the top sheet is a summary of. For all of our sports and how many students participated. And how many teams we had for grade level for basketball. Um, so as you can see, we had great participation, it was a great year for sports. Um, cross country was amazing, having like almost a hundred thirty A eight students participate. And then I did a survey with all the students that are currently in fourth through seventh, so next year they'll be in our fifth through eighth. Grades that play most of the sports. And just to get an idea what the interest level is and if the students. That sit on here, they're interested and want to participate, actually do, it'll be another growth year. Um, hundred and ten boys potentially, as compared to seventy seven this year. Ninety six girls for basketball, well, as compared to sixty nine girls this year. And volleyball, um, we had thirty girls this year and we have forty five interested next year, so. Lots of additions and changes and growth, um, but that is good and fun. Um, at the bottom. I just listed some fundraising efforts um, that we did throughout the school year. Um, so there's the truck raffle tickets concession stand. At the last football game concession stands throughout. The basketball games and then at the tournaments and then we did a three on three tournament basketball for middle school that was great. Um, and I just want to note that we had. So many great volunteers, students, parents, staff members that would volunteer for these evenings and. The three on three was a Saturday and um. So it was just really fun this year for me in athletics, that just gives you. A little snapshot of that, any questions about that part? Okay. Um, so the next two parts um. Are just, are informational because I had mentioned at the last meeting about looking at assistant coach stipends. So we have currently on the stipend schedule, the only assistant coach that we have a schedule for is the uh, cross country. And we have hired basketball assistant coaches and football assistant coaches in the past, I look back to two thousand sixteen. But their pay is inconsistent. And some of the stipends they were paid are not a part of this schedule. And so basically my proposal is just that we create that. Line item for the assistant, so it's transparent and consistent and clear. Um. And because I found out now that um, that this has come up into possibly linked into the C V A. I gave you what that would look like. Basically on the current stipend and then what it would look like on the. Uh, the one that the W B T A is working with you. I hope that makes sense, so I showed you on both. Schedules what that looks like and can certainly answer other questions about some of the rationale and. The research I've done with other school districts um, coming to that. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, so you mentioned before that the, like all of these activities, athletic activities have to be self funding from the activities fees?
Everything except the hire, the coach, the staff.
Okay.
The school pays the staff, but the, uh, which I'll get into more later, but yeah, the transportation, yeah.
Right.
All that, okay? Alright, thank you, thank you. Okay, principals should report.
Try to keep it short because this reading is uh, looking to be a real quick one tonight. The S VAC started today for grades three and four, so that will take up a big portion of our staff. Especially with different groupings um, this week and then uh, next week when we start doing makeups. Um, it's the uh, time for bridge benchmark testing for the star assessments, that's gonna be our last benchmark window. Uh, so we typically will benchmark um, a student if they've been here all year three times at the very least. More often than that, if they are in um, intervention groups where they need more intensive instruction. Um, see you got upcoming music concerts for first graders going on in the music room with uh, Ms. Hillis. Cross country is gonna finish their races this next week for the kindergarten to fourth grade. Got some coming up, I think Tuesday and Thursday of next week. Um, and then the big deal is career week, it's coming up at the end of May. Um, it's been a huge undertaking that Anna Porter has taken on herself to put together, you know, it'll include presentations. From community members and what they do in the classrooms and it'll include uh, people bringing their. Vehicles that they use for their jobs to park around the school, the kids can go through it, look at them, ask questions, that type of thing. One of the more unique ones that we have is Wildlife Exterminator. That's gonna come, so if you have problems with a possum or a squirrel getting trapped, these are guys. Yeah, that'll be really interesting. We'll pick the demonstration, that's gonna be a real one. That's unfortunate. That one I'm excited to go through. Then the West Valley High School graduates will come back and do their walk through on June first. So they can say hi to their teachers that they've had in the past and see siblings and things like that. And then we've got a lot of Springfield trips coming up in the elementary. It almost feels like somebody's gone somewhere almost every other day or something. But it's a good time for that so that they can in the year be busy even here, that's really the things that they do remember from school. So we can try and encourage that. Yeah, that's where we are, still, still, we are still dealing with uh, some staffing issues. Always, definitely not at the level it was in February, we still pull pairs almost every day. Though, the role that a teacher would have, which then opens that up, but, yeah.
Thank you, middle school. I keep it short. Um, fifth grade has completed the state summative science assessment and most um, students completed it in a single seating. Um, and it's just good to see that it's not really long, I was glad to see also in the math, the S VAC math, that the reduced length of some of those tests, I think. Helps students stay in the game a little bit longer and show their best instead of being exhausted. I've been pleased with the changes over the years in that testing. And the fifth grade level is headed to the forestry expo later this week. Um, sixth grade experienced Big Creek um, as an overnight field trip last week and they have beginning band festival here. At West Valley on the eighteenth of May and Sherry Hand. And we're working with them throughout that day and with the Rural Music Teacher Association to put that on. The seventh grade will travel to Glacier, half the class goes on the twenty third and half on the twenty fourth. I think they're still planning to go on their boat ride. And that ride's been a little bit more exciting since that back, I don't know if it's the west side or. Crystal Therman would know more about the burn areas and things make the whole boat ride more exciting, even though it's kind of tragic, but. They'll be headed there, the advanced, advanced fan festival for seventh and eighth graders is at West Valley on May eleventh. And the eighth grade will have an internal tour of the Hungry Horse Dam on June second. And that's kind of exciting that they're letting people back down inside the van. So, it's pretty cool, um, the promotion ceremony, promotion ceremony will be at six P M on June eighth. So we're having that here and I'll be contacting board members that would like to help pass. So we're having that here and I'll be contacting board members that would like to help pass out the promotion certificates. And we often have a few with eighth graders, sometimes they're the ones that step forward and you're the handing out, but I'll reach out to you for some representatives for that. And we would love to have you all there. And so that we talked a little bit about the state testing, but fifth through eighth grade will complete the state testing before the end of May. And Tonya Jewett coordinates for the district and Terry Gearanfield's for needing for the middle school timetable. And we're currently interviewing for the social studies positions tomorrow. We have two in-house applicants for that. And the math positions are not filled, but they're posted on the state job site and I think soon to be in the newspaper locally. Those positions. Crystal Thurman and I, the counselor, are working on finalizing next year's daily schedule and plan to have students select courses for next year at the end of this month. And I guess the last thing I want to share is that this is teacher appreciation week. I don't think I can look at them without crying because it's been a hard few years. And I'm not a crier at all, or maybe not, not a crier. But I think that your dedication to kids and to each other, and when you're on such a large staff, what your neighbor, what's happening for your best friend next door, you're taking in that into it's not just, you know, your students, it's part of being a large community and working through this together. And I don't, I think if someone has not been a teacher, they just don't know, there's the bigger I wonders about curriculum. How is this working? How is this affecting my grade level? Down to the little things of someone saying, hey, I've noticed that so-and-so hasn't had a coat for three days. You know, what do we do about that? And find it's contact parents, do they need one? And I think just the, from the little finite things that you do to the big greater things that you do, that all that makes a difference. And we wouldn't be West Valley without you. We just would not. So I appreciate all of supporting staff, but especially our teachers. So thank you.
We wanted the interview and appointment of the new trustee candidates. I think we all have a the letters that candidates have submitted, so on your machine. Okay, Erica wasn't able to make it tonight. She had, she told us that she couldn't, so we have her, we have her letter though. Should I read that or should we just? I guess everybody can read that themselves. We'll go on to Laura Eckern. Laura, would you please address the board?
Where would you like me?
Um. Where's the, oh, the best?
It follows. Walk too much. Okay, so I will try to keep this as efficient as possible, but I also want to kind of give you an idea of who I am and what my background is and why I'm here. My name's Laurel Eckern. I graduated from West Valley School. I was a student who was lucky enough to have parents who saw that I wasn't being challenged enough in my current educational environment. And they would drive 60 miles a day to make sure that I came here to have like the best opportunities possible. I was a college and career awareness program director for Evergreen School District for seven years. So I served students fifth through, I mean, you can say 12th, but I helped them even afterwards with getting jobs and doing their FAS and scholarships and that sort of thing. Worked on dropout retention, budget management, focusing on developing plans for high school readiness and then post-secondary readiness and all of its forms, right? So not just that four-year program, because that's not for everybody, but looking at military trades, VOT, two-year, four-year, the whole gamut. And helping them kind of find their right fit and identifying resources, because many of them did not come from resource-rich families to help them achieve what it was that they wanted to do. And we were able to achieve incredible things, including, you know, increasing our graduation rate by 20%. One year, we had a college, I guess, post-secondary going rate of 86%, which is huge. So that's my passion. It's not what I've been doing for quite a while, but that is like education, it's my love. After that, I ran the leadership flattened program for Calispel Chamber of Commerce for two years, which is a professional leadership development program for business leaders in our community, community. And currently, we, my husband and I own Sky Bolt Media, which is a media and video production company that helps commercial businesses and nonprofits, individuals, organizations tell their story and communicate with the audience they want to reach. I have a second grader here and I think the biggest reason why I'm here is because what probably is special. And having worked in high schools, following my students, having gone to, like, attending colleges, doing college visits, working in Evergreen School District. I'm glad you guys realize just how special this place is. The skill level of your teachers, the skill level of your paras especially, because it is a highly demanding job and it is one that doesn't pay very well. It's insane. I hope you know that what you have here is not normal, like hands down, not normal. And it's very special and it's something that we need to fight for and it's something that we need to all collaborate very carefully on. I was on the bond committee and took on creating infographics when I became aware that like our company was hired to do the video production for the bond. But it became obvious to me that we needed to tell that story through data too, right? So there was beautiful presentations, beautiful video, but then there was that need to have stuff for the website, for social media, for voters, for data junkies like myself that want to know the why. So I did all the freelance work and did that pro bono, working with Cal to try to make sure that we had that information that was digestible to get out. And it's because I care, right? Whether like our company had a contract or not, I would be here and I would be fighting for that. It's been really obvious just through the bond work and through, you know, watching the school go through its various changes, that there's a lot of challenges on the horizon. After I applied, I started watching your board meetings, which was eye-opening. There's a lot that you guys are dealing with, budget shortfalls, sub-short shortages, not enough paras in the building, kind of insufficient wages for paras, which you guys have addressed and asked questions about, I guess not addressed, but like are bringing up. The need to bond, max out infrastructure, overburdened taxpayers. And I think that despite all of these challenges, also possibly richer now, maybe going off to be a bourbon exterminator instead of a I think despite all of these challenges, that when we look at challenges, there's a lot of opportunity there. Adversity presents a lot of opportunity for us to take a look at what can we do better? How do we ask questions in new ways? How do we look within ourselves, within our school, within our resources? And identify areas where we're really, really strong and then maybe ways that we can pivot. You know, some areas that I kind of think about is it's clear that you guys are all a very strong team. But how do we collaborate even more effectively? What resources do we have in this community, in the school that we can really tap into? Sorry, I'm nervous, so I'll get out. What questions should we be asking parents? What data can we be harvesting? How do we get our message out to the community and out to parents? I think that there are some incredible storytelling opportunities here that we have that can, we can really tap into very easily. And so these are kind of all the things that are running through my head is I wanted to apply and that I want to spit out to you. Because I think that despite all of these challenges and despite the fact that we're kind of going to be running through a gauntlet, getting beat up for the foreseeable future, there's a lot of ways that we can come out of this even stronger, even better, pivoting and even though this district is changing, even though there's going to be 1,500 houses coming on the market, many of which are low income or entry-level housing, that's going to change the population, right? That's going to require more intervention, more special education, more need for paras, more resources. But that doesn't mean that that has to change how Great West Valley is. So I just want you to know I'm here. I recognize that it's going to be a lot of really hard work. It's going to require abnormal amounts of time compared to certain other school board roles and I'm here, I'm ready to do it, like I'm in it, I'm with you. We may not always agree, but I see a lot of willingness to ask questions, to collaborate. And I desperately want to be a part of your team. So, thank you.
Is Mark here?
Well, I have a tough act to follow. Yes, my name's Matt Wadi and I'm married to Tiffany, she's a tantrum. We have six children. Both Tiffany and I were born and raised here in Kalispell. My day job, I'm a structural engineer and then in the evenings I try to help raise the six children. Tiffany was a student here at West Valley when she was growing up. And we moved into the West Valley School District about six years ago, a little over six years ago. And so five of our children have attended West Valley and we currently still have two children here, our two youngest. We have a fifth grader Ivan and we have a second grader Lydia. And we also have many friends that have children that are enrolled in the, in the school district. So I just, because we have children that have been educated here and we still have children that are being educated and we have lots of friends with children here. I wanted to serve on the board. I don't have any type of agenda that I'm trying to push or anything like that. So I just want the children to be able to have the best education possible and in a safe environment. So I'm open for any questions that you'd have. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. Thanks, Mark.
Hi, thank you for having me. I, I guess I'm the elder statesman here, so I don't have any kids at the school, minor in their 30s. I want to tell you, I guess, my driving force for wanting to apply for this position and then why I think I would be well-suited to be on this position. My driving force is, and thinking about it over several months, I grew up in a small town, Roundup, Montana, down near Billings. And when I was 12, my family moved from Roundup to Haver, from a very small district to a larger district. And even at the age of 12, I could see the difference that that good education or a better education gave me. I probably wouldn't have gone to college if I hadn't done that. So I have a very, very strong interest in, in the best education possible for young people so that it expands their possibilities. This is my first interaction with West Valley. I will echo others' comments that it's, it seems to me a very special place and I would love to be able to help continue that. Reasons I think I would be good on this board. I have a 30-plus-year career as a financial planner before I retired. Financial planning, as I thought about it over the last few months, has a lot of skills that translate to what you do. One of those skills that we exercise daily was confidentiality about people's finances and their life situation. Another skill was, was long-term planning. Our time horizons were typically 20 to 30 years. And so we were always bringing that into play. A third skill was working together collaboratively. Sometimes it wasn't always easy to get a family on board with a plan that would make their life better. But it was something we could work through together. And sometimes it took a few years to get A jogged around to make B happen. You seem familiar with those kinds of things. Another reason I think I'd be good, well-suited here is my past board experience. Hopefully you guys are familiar with the co-op, Flatiron Record Co-op Roundup for Safety. I served on that board for a number of years. I was chair on that board for a number of years. I'm also currently involved in the Whitefish Credit Union Supervisory Committee. With that, I get a great insight into how a large organization is run and run well. And so I think I can bring that sort of experience, my board background into play. And I thank you for the opportunity.
And me. And you both position up trying to discuss. My board members. It could be one of these, each of them very, very worthy candidates into, into place Gretchen on the board for a year. So I guess we need a motion to put the question on the floor. Do we have the motion?
It's going to be a tough decision.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody who applied and just know that, you know, obviously, unfortunately, we only get to pick one. But, you know, these opportunities kind of recycle themselves, so hopefully you know, come back for the next one if you're, if you're not
Well, next spring, there will be two positions, three-year positions open on the board. So we will have your names for next year. So, you know, whoever doesn't get it this time, then we, we hope that you'll come back next spring and come on the board next year.
I'll make a motion to appoint Laurel Eckern to the board.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Everybody took their discussion, which is fine. We say, yeah, thank you all your great dates. Yeah.
Tough decision for sure.
It's awful to do in front of people.
Is it awful to be on the board?
I won't say goodbye.
All right. If there's no more discussion, then we would surely like Mark and Rex to keep this in mind because next spring there'll be two, two, three-year openings and we surely could use your expertise. All right. All those in favor of Laurel? All right, anybody opposed? So unanimous or also we are next school board member and we'll be in contact. You'll need to be signed in at that superintendent's office and maybe be sure to get your email and I'm sure she has it.
Yes, yes.
But, yeah, just so we have communication source for you in the near future, because as soon as you're signed, as soon as you are take the oath of office with Cal, then you become a board member. You didn't have to wait. So we'll check with you and we'll get in contact on the particular. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, the evaluation of work, this is, this is something that should have happened last in an April meeting and didn't. And so we've got to do a quick closed session to evaluate our work. It should only take a few minutes and we are going to leave here. We'd like to have everybody leave. Don't leave. No, we're leaving. We're going to take, we're going to go and find ourselves a company note for. So everybody just take a little break and, and we will come back.
I'll make a motion and go in the closed session.
And by second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, so we'll go. Big reception. Okay, here's one. Hiring, the next one, hiring a new assistant. Big reception, okay, here's one, hiring, the next one, hiring a new assistant clerk. Damon King, we have a new assistant clerk fix. Helping Cecilia with that table in Brooksville. Now we've got Shannon.
So she is replacing Lisa, who was with us for a short time. And then Damon was a middle school parent. So we had four applicants and she was the most qualified and I feel like she was a good fit for the office and willing to jump in and learn and she'll be good.
And she also said she continued to do crossing bar guard morning and after. That was when, as she walked out. Hey, I don't want to give up. We'll have to find somebody to replace her other duties during the day, but I think I should keep so.
Group a motion for B and C together then?
That's a great idea.
Or no?
Yeah, C and D together.
I will make a motion to hire Shannon King as new assistant clerk and to add her to Three Rivers and Glacier Bank accounts.
Okay, sounds good, all in favor? All right, we'll go on to E, the wellness policy. Heidi here to discuss that.
I said it's nice to see you. Basically, I wrote up the policy that Montana well, were required, since we have the USDA's school breakfast program and lunch program required to have a wellness policy in our school. It was started in 2007 and I didn't find one, and then it was revised in 2017, I think it, the generic one just got plugged in. So I've been researching it and revising it for our school and it needs to be approved so that I can do the assessment by June 30th. And then that's an ongoing thing, we've established a committee and we'll just continue to update you on what we're doing and the different things that we're improving in the nutrition and physical activity for our school. Thank you. Any questions on it?
I'll make a motion to approve the wellness policy.
Any? Any discussion? All those in favor of the accepting that wellness policy opposed by Heidi? I?
Thank you.
Anybody, and thank you. It looks great, thank you.
Thanks for the thought process behind it, I have a key points to, that I like to follow too.
Okay, you're welcome. Great, so, all right, all those in favor of that? Anybody opposed? A passed, now, we're going into the insurance carrier, the insurance MOA, now this, I'm not exactly sure where we're going to go with this. I know we have representatives of the insurance.
And the, yeah, we asked her to be on the agenda, so I can start.
Yeah, thank you.
Kind of the background. So, kind of based on a series of events. And we kind of are currently finding ourselves in a rush to figure out this insured stuff. So we do appreciate though how quickly information is coming together and the time being devoted to the issue now. The open enrollment needs to start on May 15th and be wrapped up by the end of May for the June payroll purposes. And we're proposing that an official insurance committee be set up for the next school year. So that would be made up of two trustees and at least two staff members certified and a classified. So that we can start this process and get it going earlier next year. In the meantime, we need to make a decision pretty much immediately in regards to changing health insurance carriers. So the action item that we're seeking is for the board to approve changing our insurance carrier from the Northwest Montana Consortium to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And based on the timing and getting the adjusted numbers just this afternoon, WBTA doesn't have an official recommendation. We haven't had time to make an official vote from members, but we would predict based on the new numbers that we just saw from Peggy from Pain West that you'll see too. That Blue Cross Blue Shield would be approved by the association. According to the CBA, it's section 2.4. Selection and or change of carrier and or policies of the flex plan and or health insurance must be approved by the board and the association. So we're asking that the board approve to make a change in the carrier to Blue Cross Blue Shield this evening pending the approval, which would be a majority vote by the WBTA. And the WBTA will hold a meeting tomorrow to get that official vote. So this is a one-year contract, it sounds like, and this comes back to that need for us to have an insurance company or committee, sorry, for next year. If this decision is not made tonight, we'll request that a special board meeting be held on Tuesday. If, or sorry, Thursday, after the union has had a chance to meet and vote, if you prefer that happen first. So again, the action that we're seeking is to approve changing the carrier from the Northwest Montana Consortium to Blue Cross Blue Shield upon the majority approval of WBTA. And before any action is taken, Peggy and Karen are here from Pain West to answer questions and show the comparisons.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, so we can hand out our analysis of between Blue Cross Blue Shield and the consortium. We did go through several companies and did a full analysis for for Mary Kane Bonnie and her group, and we do definitely suggest an insurance committee for a health insurance, it's a very extensive line item for, for the schools. And it's an important piece for teachers and for everyone involved, so Karen, do you want to go ahead and get, go through everything?
So the spreadsheet that you have in front of you, there's three pages, each page corresponds to one of the three plans the district currently offers. This year, West Valley School received a 7.9% increase from the Northwest Montana Sports Consortium. And as you can see from your spreadsheet here, Blue Cross Blue Shield is coming in at 11% undercurrent. Or if we add lines of coverage, we, we also have dental vision and the district provides a $5,000 life insurance policy. If we bundle those with Blue Cross Blue Shield, it reduces the rates by another 2%. So that's what we would recommend doing. So on the $2,000 deductible plan, the Blue Cross Blue Shield rates are 12% undercurrent. The plan, there's a few minor differences between the, the current consortium plan and the Blue Cross Blue Shield Montana plan. They're outlined on this little PowerPoint spreadsheet here, but mostly on the $2,000 plan, the co-insurance is 80/20 instead of 70/30, which is means that the Blue Cross Blue Shield will pay a greater percentage of the claim once the employee reaches their deductible. And the offices that copays are just structured a little bit different, but they're very, very, very similar. And with the consortium, there's an out-of-pocket maximum for the prescription drug plan. In addition to the medical out-of-pocket maximum, Blue Cross Blue Shield does not have that, so it's less out-of-pocket to the member. On the $4,000 deductible plan, that's a $4,000 high deductible plan. The plan is structured exactly the same as the plan is now with the consortium. And those rates with Blue Cross Blue Shield would be 6% under the current rates with the consortium. And then the final plan is a $6,050 high deductible health plan. Blue Cross Blue Shield doesn't offer a $6,000 deductible plan, so it would be a $5,000 deductible plan, so lower deductible. And that is 5.7% over current with the consortium, so still under the renewal received by the consortium. In addition to those rates, Blue Cross Blue Shield is offering a $28,000 transition credit, which would be deducted from a future invoice. And the reason for that credit is to offset potential claims run out that the district would be responsible for with the consortium. Since the consortium is a self-funded trust, any claims that were incurred in June but not paid by the end of the contract, the district could be responsible for those claims and we don't, we have no idea what those claims are going to be. So if those claims exceeded what West Valley School District has in their reserves with the consortium, that 28,000 would be in addition to those reserves to help pay those claims.
If it's not fully utilized, then it just reduces.
It will just reduce. It would come off of a future invoice, yes. Yes.
Do we know how much of the reserve, with the consortium? They gave me an estimate of, what is it, $24,000?
Yeah, and that was as of February, so it could be more.
Could be, yeah.
The rates here are based on the census as it currently stands with potential for people waiving, we as a questionnaire was sent out to staff asking if they had the option to waive coverage, would they? So we took all those names and sent it back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, had them recalculate the rates just to make sure we had the most accurate rates possible. So if there's more than a 10% difference in the census as it stands, these rates could change a little more, we don't anticipate. I think that census is pretty accurate based on that questionnaire that went out. And then finally, Blue Cross Blue Shield does require 70% of eligible employees to participate in the plan. An eligible, if, if, if an employee has access to another health plan like through a spouse or Medicare, Medicaid, or VA, those numbers are not calculated in that eligibility network. So they're kind of removed, so so 70% of anyone that doesn't have other options available.
And you figure that that's doable for the teacher group? And like, well, actually, it's more than the teacher group, it's admin and
What individuals have the option to choose between the different policies?
Yes, yes, three plans would be offered, those three plans that I, that I mentioned, yes.
And Bonnie, you mentioned that next year having a, an insurance committee and, and I'm, I didn't have time to write down what you said, a teacher.
To, well, we were just throwing around.
Sure.
Two trustees and for sure, one class, at least one classified and one certified.
And one, and one key.
Yeah, yeah.
So that'd give you a five. Five member committee. And, and so even though the, the contract is for two years, right? The health insurance isn't for two years, but the teacher's contract is for two years, or you, or maybe not. Maybe you're thinking it might not be this year, okay, it has been, right, for two years?
Last one, yes. For the one, yeah, the last one.
Was for two, but, but in any case, the health insurance will be reviewed every year, right, by this committee?
That would be the idea, I think.
You may not be able to answer this or even know the answer to it, but do you know why there's been a drop in the number of chiropractor and physical therapy visits that are allowed?
So physical, are you talking about the consortium or are you talking about Blue Cross Blue Shield? So there is no limit on physical therapy visits, there's, so, so these are standardized plans. This isn't anything that we developed specifically for West Valley. Blue Cross Blue Shield comes out with standardized plans and here's what we select from, and so they're, that's their, their cookie cutter.
Yeah, it's just gradually worsened over, over the years, so.
Yeah.
Not your fault.
Bonnie, the teachers have already seen this though before, you guys.
Yes, we, well, we've, we've talked about it, we had a quick meeting last Friday. And then these are new numbers that were, we just sent out the, the Google form, we get information about who would opt in.
Okay.
Or sorry, who would opt out. And so then they were recalculated, so we just got that this afternoon, so that's why we need to know it. Tomorrow, well, yes, yep, we would have a meeting tomorrow.
Do you know if 70% seems like a reasonable number, we'll be able to meet?
The 70%.
Yeah, the eligible.
Uneligible, I think so.
Well, especially if those who can opt out, they are not part of that eligible.
Right.
So 70% of our staff, 70% of those people, I think we're good.
Most of the people in your survey were opting out because of other options, right?
Right, exactly. They, they had to give the other option, and I think those numbers will actually be less, because those were the people that wanted to opt out of the Northwest Montana Consortium. I would assume that some of those that were opting out will now stay because of the better. Okay. We might have to just send a email out.
Yeah, I think you can go down to Google, just attach this and then have an informed meeting with anyone who's at your school.
So obviously, the, the difference between where we had, the with waivers allows people, teachers to opt out.
We, that's our next, that's our thing is our MOA, because right now in our CBA, it is mandatory for teachers to take the insurance, right, so that's the next step, it all kind of goes together.
Pricing reflects that.
That's why we, yeah.
We originally received a quote with all of the, all the teachers in, everyone that's currently involved, that reported it on this. They asked if the rates would change, people wait, so that's what it meant.
Yeah, thank you. During the review process, was there other policies and other programs that were out there that were really viewed?
Yes, there were.
Be the one that floated to the top?
Yes. There was a small committee of just teachers that met and with Cecilia. And we had, I don't know, bars or five or other.
I understand. And this, it's like, it's imported to the top, Blue Cross Blue Shield is offering the best. Best plans and the best rates. I'll make a motion to approve the Cross Blue Shield for this coming based on the rates and everything that we see here, pending approval from West Valley Teachers Union. And then also putting a committee in place for next year to look at insurance on an annual basis.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion on that?
Just giving the, the pending, the teachers, do we want to table this until we have that to make sure that we're not switching over?
That's why we put that in there, because the, the open enrollment needs to start May 15th, to be done by the end of the month, so if you wanted to get approval, yes, we can approve this tomorrow, Adam, or vote on it tomorrow at a meeting, but then there would need to be a we would request that in a special meeting we call, so that we can get a vote.
Could we, well, both to accept it pending, accepting of teachers?
And then we could get something written to you.
So then if they don't okay it, then that makes our, okay.
Boy, did you had your hand up.
Just that I had pointed this out, how it is written in their CBA, that there's equal value, it's okay to go forward with your saying yes upon their approval, one would negate the other, I mean, neither one is weighted more than the other. So to save a second meeting and to allow them to go forward, and if, if it doesn't go through there, then you're all back to the drawing board. But it's, it's saving time by doing this, and neither has paid away.
So yeah, the, the, the motion was pending approval of West Valley.
All right, all those in favor, or did we get a second? All, all those in favor? All those opposed. Hey, that is. Asked.
Get that in writing to Cecilia. After that meeting, just so that, that we know they're ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was, thank you, guys, that was great, thank you.
Alright, so now the insurance MOA, that, that has to do with whether or not people can opt out, correct?
And since our CBA is currently in flux with our negotiating team. We just wanted to add this and I included the current language and our post-language.
Well, I changed it slightly, actually, but.
Um, this. Focuses on. Deleting that line, participation is mandatory. There's also a chunk in the current language. That we figured since we were here, we could eliminate that, that was something we talked about in negotiations. Where it says, and for an employee who held a signed contract prior to the ninety-three, ninety-four school year who works halftime or more. No one currently fills that bill, that's sort of been, and that time has gone by. So I took it out because the good time to take it out, but if that's a deal breaker, can stay it. The main things I highlighted in the proposed language. Obviously, participation is mandatory is missing, and then. The amount the district pays, that six thousand per person. We put that in as a TBD and then added not less than six thousand in the interest of keeping insurance rates. Premiums steady for those people who stay in, we don't want to jeopardize that benefit by having people opt out. But we don't think it will jeopardize things. We hope it won't, the plan is for it not to, but we wanted that. Number to be able to fluctuate slightly, and then in negotiations, there's a little more language. That we can address later, but this is, I think, the most relevant MOA for now. Because our current contract says we can't opt out, which we're about to do. Sounds good.
So this would, this would, again, it keeps a contribution right now at the six thousand, but it allows. You guys to opt out, and then the ultimate, you know, what six thousand becomes and etcetera, we'll get. Dealt with through the teacher negotiation.
Exactly. And we'll see how the numbers shake out, which would give us a new number, perhaps it will be very close.
So ultimately, kind of the background here is to, you know, as part of the teacher negotiations was just to provide. Flexibility to the teachers similar to what the um, you know, non-teacher staff. Has to opt out of the insurance. It's mandatory before, as, as long as the rates weren't materially different, it, it provides. You know, those teachers with the ability to kind of go on, you know, a spouse's insurance. And potentially save the districts some money and then potentially. Provide, um, you know, the district can then provide some sort of a, you know, contribution towards that, that teacher. Who opts out, so it's got, it's, hopefully it'll, it's, you know, works out to be kind of a win-win and a net, you know, net gain for. Those teachers and then a net gain for the district as well.
So we need a, a um. Motion to accept this MOA?
I'll make a motion to accept the, the MOA.
Is there any more discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this a memorandum of agreement on the current, is this on the twenty-two, twenty-three contract? Do you want to sign it, choose a copy to sign? We have our WPTA folks here and. Yeah, upward member maybe.
If I sign this? And then you guys sign it, it should be. This long, right? So we need to, are there any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor? I, I, anybody opposed? Uh, next, the cyber incident response, which, did you want to address that?
Uh, yeah, sure, so we, I've been trying to uh, gear up our cybersecurity. And part of getting us into like the green light basically is making sure we have a cybersecurity incident plan. Which this is not my work, I will preface that, so this is actually from. Miss Flips, a lot of school uses it, and then it has um some suggestions from Schoolhouse IT, which was our network support company. Um, in there as well, um, and I just kind of added something like at the very end to make it. A little easier with a checklist, because sometimes if something happens, your brain tends to be going in overdrive. And having a very clear checklist and trying to go through an four-page plan makes it a little easier. And we, on there, it has. If something should happen, it's very advisable to have the leaders have not like information. Contact information that is not connected to the school in case our, for some reason. The ability to check our email, our phone lines go down, so that is why there, it's suggested that any, anyone on that plan. Their personal phone and email are on there just because that is a way to communicate that's outside if something happens to our network. Or, or domain.
So you've gone over and added a few little things.
Yeah, so I just kind of, because um, that was at the end, that was added by our, um, that was from Miss Flips. But having it at the end kind of makes it hard because then you're having to flip, whereas if you have it at the front and something happens, it's. A lot easier, so there's some things that are in there twice, they're just in a different format to make it easier if something happened. But better to be.
So everybody should have one of these printed in there.
And it will be, there will be one copy in my, um, in my office, in the regular office and probably in Cecilia's. Because you need, obviously, if something happens to the domain, you're not going to be able to access it, so it needs to be printed. And then it would just have to be updated every year. But I don't think the board has to approve the updates because.
We haven't, we have nothing in, in effect right now like this at all.
Yeah, no, I, well. I think at one point we did, I think it's like our Chromebook usage agreement, but as superintendent change and changes in the admin. It is not locatable currently, so, yes.
And then that's why, that's why you're in tech, I mean, we needed the tech specialist, yeah, Tina.
We have a district emergency plan, and that would be my question, and would that be drafted into that plan and then replace any existing language?
There is no existing language in our emergency plan that deals with the cyber.
So are you imagining this drafting into that so that we don't have separate emergency plans?
Um, in all the other schools, this is separate to my knowledge, but I don't know if that. Is, it could be added, it has a lot of outside sources that are. Come into play because it's when a cyber incident happens. I'm not, I'm not going to be necessarily the front person on the line because it's going to take someone a lot more experience.
Superintendent will though, and they have to act off that master emergency plan, so I just wonder if that would be wrapped into that piece.
I'm not sure, all, this is what all others, not all of these schools, all other Miss Flip schools have. I don't know if they wrap it into there. But it comes as a completely separate document and at the top has like when it was approved by the board.
Because that, that plan has what we would do in different, responds to different items, right, and it goes through.
Not as long when I looked through them, like some of them are longer. But I mean, it certainly can be added.
Just because that is being worked on and it got lost in draft between the last superintendent and the current superintendent. And it's still sitting there with draft notes on it, and while it's being drafted, I wonder if that was something we consider. At least elements of it to note this exists would be in that other.
I think that would be very wise, you know. Yeah, I think if we have a reference to see.
If we, if we got this incident with the idea that then it will be added to the overall.
Yeah, or at least a reference to this in the overall, yeah.
Okay, so our. Our motion will be to adopt this one and then. Reference it in the overall disaster plan when it's.
To approve the cyber incident response plan.
Right, any, any further discussion on that?
Anybody?
We are going to include it, then into the draft, is that what we decide?
We have that at the end, right here to the motion that we're gonna add, and add it to the. To the um, overall disaster plan.
Yeah, that can be a motion to approve this plan and add at least an addendum to the master plan when it's done.
So then the motion will have both those.
That way, whether or not the addendum actually includes this entire thing or includes a reference to, the addendum will be there.
Right, yeah. That is, is that good, do you think?
Yeah, I, I think that's good.
How about you, Tina, would that work?
I think that fits what you're.
You're talking about, that way at least there's a reference to it in the major.
We have multiple documents, the more we can. Put these together, the better.
Well, like she said, this has so many different aspects, but at least we can reference it.
I appreciate your work on it because it's just a matter of time till you have some sort of response needed, so.
Okay, um, is there any further discussion on this? Right, did, did we get a second on that?
No, with a change up.
I'll second the change.
Alright, alright, is um, any more discussion? Hey, anybody in favor, all in favor? Now, that's okay, our next one, request to establish technology fee for middle two school students, I think. Think that you kind of um, get on that in your.
Yeah, so. Like I mentioned, the K through four um are more of a true one-to-one where, when they're in the classroom, because they're a. There's a word for it, I can't think of it now, but they're in whole classes take place in that one classroom, basically. You have fewer hands on a device, so you, if it gets damaged. It's child A, maybe child B, because sometimes they have reading groups. In the middle school, the way our one-to-one is set up is there's a cart in every classroom, and when you, so you have. Numerous students throughout the day. Majority of our damage comes from the middle school, and so my, that fifteen-dollar insurance waiver doesn't really come into play. Because we can't narrow down with certainty majority of the time where the damage came from. And that's, um, this is not going to be a, my recommendation is in order for us to. Keep up with these repairs. Charging a fee, I do not like to charge fees because as a parent, it is. Difficult when you have more than one child, but it is only in the middle school. It is not permanent, it is only until we can get a better, like um, I mentioned a couple of years ago. We do not have the budget to sustain the one-to-one program the way it is in the middle school. We need to get transition somehow to a true one-to-one where it's one kid has one device the whole day. Comes with a lot of backend work that Tina and I will be working on a lot next year to solve it and hoping to get it implemented. The twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's too soon for us to try and pull it together um to implement it this year. And so in order for us to can. Up with repairs, uh, right now, like I said, I maxed out on devices, like if, when we have more. Devices go down, I don't know if we'll have the budget to replace them. This tech fee gives us a cushion to repair those damages that most often occur in the middle school. And keep our one-to-one program the way it is for that year or next year. And hopefully, we'll, the year after that, we'll go to a more true one-to-one where it's easier for. The damage to be identified and the charge to come from the person who did the damage.
This, again, if, if a student can't pay this.
Correct, it's, yeah, if, if you look, it talks about if they can't pay this to contact those, the office for like the scholarship.
Right, okay.
Outside of athletics, this would be the only other, the, being charged.
In many schools?
Yes, middle school.
We have a PE uniform, but again, if need be, they can buy used or we can scholarship things. I mean, it's something that's, at some point needs to be considered on electives because part of the budget deficit is. Is what those, those courses cost, but right now there isn't, uh, I don't even, I don't know, are we renting band rentals right now? There's a P for. If you're participating in band, and that goes in for the refurbishing every year and again, if needed. We make sure everybody can participate, we haven't ever had anything where. We've ever kept anybody out of anything. I think it's a, a reasonable fee, it's the price of a movie ticket or, you know. I think for the amount of use, they use those in almost every class period, they're using them, heavy use. And I, you know. I guess I don't think it's unreasonable for their, their cost and repair, and for, we purchased most of them with the S R funds and then. There's not really a way to keep up, to maintain them, so. It's hard without a lot of parents in the room here to talk about that, but I guess we would hear from them. We put it out there and it, it, it's a difficult, but that becomes a point, then I guess we take that up after that too, but.
They don't take them home, do they?
They don't.
They just go around and.
Because it's a, there is a cart in every classroom, which is why we have to have such a high number. Because thirty kids in one classroom go to a different classroom at the end of the day, so then you have to make sure that you have. That number in every classroom because those kids travel.
Policy on fees. And that we, we looked at, there's policy about providing the education and then fees are only for specific types of things. And Kat and I went through and read that, and there's P language in your policy. It's in Montana code, it's for things for like excessive use or damage or there are other times that we can put these.
So it's legitimate in the, so you checked it to make sure we can't do that.
At least in our perspective, to make sure that that fit, we didn't want to walk into something that.
And that'll be for one year, then.
My hope is one year, yes, because if we get to a true one-to-one, then your option is. Here's your insurance that you may purchase, or if something happens to the device, then you're on the hook for the whole device. We can't necessarily do that in the middle school, um, because. A lot of times, there might be a couple of periods that go by before the damage is noticed, and then trying to track down who it is is very difficult. And I am going to be doing a lot more tracking next year of exactly which side, what type of damage it comes from, just to. So we have a lot more data, but I can tell you like. Like I said, I'm only repairing Chromebooks that are unusable, there's the, and the, the screen is broken, they're not charging on either side. And you're already two thousand dollars. Doing just the bare minimum, and there's about eight to fifteen computers in the school that. There's something wrong with them, but they still work, so they're out there because it's better than no computer. So it's in order for us to. Keep up our technology, I, something can, has to be done because we just don't, we just don't have the budget. And I, like, I hard out computers, I strip what I can, I try and do everything I can to save money. Um, which is why only we're at the point where if it's broke to the point it can't be used. I'll, I'll repair it, but.
So you still have the insurance since we're one-to-one in the elementary, do you have the insurance option for parents?
And for the middle school?
For the elementary?
Yes, so that's that, because they don't, that one is true, the ability, and as a school, we just have to be. Get into the mindset, we're gonna have to start making sure that if there's something that's broken on a device. That there's more communication and research. That there's more communication and research on it when it's one to one, because we have that insurance now. Um, but it doesn't, something that the parents can opt out of it. And play the gamble game of if something happens, and so if you look at the back, it lists the Chromebook art parts. And how much they're, they're worth, and that does include my cost to replace it, because. That is not, that doesn't come free, and so. But yes, they're catered for, we'll have the choice to do an insurance, get through it. We just don't have, I'd love to option that, but it's just not feasible.
But every kid is expected to have a computer, whether they have that insurance or not, they'll have a computer. Right?
As soon as the parents sign the permission slips, saying that they can have.
And what if the parents don't?
Sign it, sign it slip. Then teachers have to work around it, I've never had a parent not sign it. Because typically what happens is, I've had like. About ten days go by and like everybody else is on the computer and the kids, like, the parents sign this lift, because they're, it's not a cost for them to sign it. They're just signing saying that we have permission for their kids to access the internet, to access these. Things, so there's, there's kind of two things going on, the, um, that permission slip is, I think, super important for the school to have. And then they can opt out of the insurance on that form.
This is the elementary and secondary, I just don't know.
And so the elementary has the insurance, the middle school will have a fee. The fifteen dollar fee, but everybody K through eight has a permission slip to sign, saying that the school, they, they give the permission school. They give the school permission to like set up a Google account to access our online math curriculum, to like, to do these various things.
So you were thinking that a fifteen dollar fee would disappear once we get to one and one on the middle school and then go to more of the insurance thing?
That is my goal, I just can't guarantee, there is a lot of like. Trouble shooting that Tina and I have to do to solve these questions of. What happens during lunchtime to these devices, where do they put it, you know, and so I, my goal is hopefully to have it. Especially considering how many devices we have coming into life very soon, is to get it in place as soon as possible. It is not feasible for it to happen next year, I think if Tina and I work really hard, we can. Get a plan in place for the year after that, but I also don't want to promise you. And have us not be able to deliver, because there's a lot of things that have to be thought through, if that makes sense, but my. My vision for this is this is only until we can get to a true one to one, where then they can optioning. Purchasing the insurance or not purchasing the insurance, I just can't tell you if that's next year or the year after.
I think grants out there for that.
For one to one.
Welcome computers, basically.
So, it is very hard. It's not impossible, I have been looking, majority of the grants are for classroom based. Um, a lot of the grants are for classroom based, like, so it's for a classroom teacher using tech. The ones that are for a squad initiative, um, it's not impossible, but they are. And that funding had already, that cycle had already passed by the time I was able to look into.
That's right, next year, when you're exploring that. Next, the year after, you can.
Yeah, I've been trying lots of avenues to figure out how to, how to fund the tech area, just because. We don't have the S R money, and tech is. Tech is very expensive, but it's very much something that is around us, and so. Trying to upkeep with it is something I think is, needs to be done, it's just navigating that expense is hard.
So the issue really is that they go into a classroom, they get on the computer, and then that goes back from that classroom, then they go to the next classroom, grab a computer. And then that goes back. So is there anywhere where you could check it out, like one computer to one kid, so you know who's?
That's where our plan is to get to that point, we don't have that capability right now, because. We have to figure out, how do they, so they grab their homeroom class, they go in the first period and they grab it, what happens to that at lunchtime? How do they get that back into there at the end, what are the logistics behind it? That is my goal, is to get to it where this is your computer, this is your computer for the year. We don't have that ability to start that next year without thinking through all of these facets and figuring out. How we move those obstacles.
I mean, I personally really like the. Contract of, obviously, if damage is done, here's the replacement costs, all that part of it. I struggle a lot with the mandatory fifteen dollar, I know it doesn't sound like much, but a, but a mandatory usage fee for something that's tied. Connectly to something that's vital to pure education for this school, which is. I don't know how taxpayers would see that, and I, as a board member, especially when we purchase these Chromebooks and. All this, that's your fun, yay, we're gonna buy all these for all the kids, it'll be so much wonderful, more wonderful for all of them, just doesn't sit well for me as a mandatory fee.
I, I hear you, um, the, it is, there's only two classes that. You can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, where they have to have computers, so then. The other avenue is, okay, those two subject areas, get the computers, everybody else has a roving cart. I will tell you as a teacher, that is very tough, because you have a very high, I'm sure your teachers can agree, that's a very high needed resource. That then they're combating and trying to schedule with other teachers. And when you're teaching and then all of a sudden, oh, I want to do this next week, I can't, that's, that's already checked out, this teacher has a project, it's checked out for four days. So we're pushing it afar. I'm not gonna say there aren't other options, it's just the other options aren't great, and I hear you on the fee. I just, I. If we don't do something, then that's what's gonna happen, is we're not gonna have true one to one, and there's gonna be teachers that do not have enough computers for every student in their classroom.
Yeah, I think this is something that would probably, obviously, we need to ask for in a levy situation, right, okay, we need funds to help maintain these things. And then the other thing is, is that I think we can implement a lot of. Check in, check out policies going in and out of school, uh, out of the classrooms too, to ensure like if there is damage, somebody can. Look at that computer real quick, people gets put into the, into the cart. And shovel it off to the next, so that it can be documented, like this, I've been, during this class period, the student had it being approached now. With obviously the agreement, like if something's broken, your child has to. Happens to be involved in that, that this is the replacement costs, I think that might be a, a. A better way of addressing this in the meantime, until people can opt into an insurance.
Um, I, so that was our attempt this year, was you look at the damage and research, figure out who it is. I have charged zero children. Because it's very difficult for a teacher, because usually. They don't have time at the end of the day of the end of their class period to check every device, and then. If they do check the device and there's one class period where they don't, a kid says, it wasn't me. Or I didn't grab that one, I accidentally grabbed a different number.
And they do check them out, they have a, they have a number that they're assigned to each class and there's logs and checkouts and.
I'm not gonna say that we can't do better, but I'm like, I will say that it's very difficult when you have that many hands on, like, how many periods, six?
Six periods and, and, and.
And an A and B days.
Maybe you a hundred kids touching the computers and the teachers, would, would you be open at all to a suggested fee? I mean, we've already put on there that they would have the option if they weren't able to afford it, or. Would you be open to a suggested fee, or is it the whole principle?
I think it's the principle of charging a fee for education, I think that sits very poorly with me, I think this is something that. You know, as taxpayers, if, if. Community found out that, yeah, we're charging you because you have to do education on a computer based system for the most part, but we're charging you for that, just. I mean, that's where we ask for money in levies, that's not where we just charge them upfront there a year, and I know it's a minimal fee, and I know this is kind of silly, but it just. What's, what's next, what else are we gonna charge them for?
This is a part of the athletic, I, I'm just.
And different from athletics. Extracurricular, where this is education.
Got, I, yeah. Yeah, Chris just.
Tina asked for parent input, and I, I think I've spoken on this before, but. I don't, I don't want my child staying at a computer for six hours a day. My kids come home with headaches all the time. So what, we could get rid of this thing altogether, if we didn't have our kids staring at computers all day long, and we taught. Had them write their spelling words down instead of listening to it, and then typing it. So I mean, that's an option. Parents didn't ask for the S R money to be spent on seven hundred and ninety-one computers for our children to stare at computers all day. I would rather them be taught, rather have them write, learn how to hold a pencil. Hear the word, hear the sentence, write it, if you want a parent opinion, that's. So, this would all be ended. We could do something like that, I know a lot of stuff is online, but. We print it, have them write it, you know, only do certain classes, two of them a day instead of six, six hours a day. My kid come home, my kids come home every day with headaches, especially today after taking their. And back testing, that they stared at the computer all day today. So. We could find an alternate option. Thank you, one parent opinion.
Thank you.
I was just gonna make a note, I'm sorry. As, as a middle school E L A teacher. We would always do vocabulary in a variety of ways, computers were typically used for research projects. When you don't have. Um, other access to backup information, or when you're trying to cite your sources and finding evidence to support your opinions. In terms of our writing, but vocabulary and that sort of thing, we do lots and lots without the computers. But when you're typing an essay and you're putting your draft, sometimes it's very appropriate. Well, I understand that part too. Do they come to the libraries or card catalog, or they pop out and look up books, you know, and.
Middle school doesn't have very limited.
If I could add to that, as a parent and an IT administrator, um. I, I, I gotta echo some of the sentiments that. I, I, I hate kids doing the math online, I understand that it's kind of, kind of necessary and whatnot, but there is something that's definitely lost. When you're not doing it by hand, I mean, almost everybody here is probably taking it to my hand. But on the other hand, in my line of work. I spend every day trying to figure out how I can reduce the amount of work people do by hand. And instead shift it over onto computers, so. While I agree that we should move away and not have them looking at the screens all the time, I do think that it may be necessary if, if. To do both, they're going to need the access to the machines, and if there are ways that we can kind of. Shift things to get kids be able to work at home, especially so that they can work more with other people, is very difficult to sit down with your kid and stare and share a computer monitor. It is much easier to be able to pass a piece of paper back and forth while you have a book open, or a worksheet that you go over with them. But that said, you're going to need the computers too, it's not changing, it's not going away.
And the printing costs that we were all told about for years, so the printing costs will be way more than. Than that, and the cost on the mentor, I mean, so all, you have to consider, there's a lot to consider, and, and there's some time to think about this, um. Me, the hope is to have it in handbooks, if you have, the handbooks have to be submitted for the August meeting. And those items would be, they're taken around, obviously, in August, so, you know, and. We were meeting on it, trying to get those ideas out there and hearing those ideas, and it takes time to think about it. A lot of good ideas between all of you. But right now, the reality is we, we have them, and there are many sitting waiting to be repaired. And then it makes a classroom short, and we've done it before where we've shared between classrooms, and that's. That's not the easiest thing at all, the bigger we get, so, and. I think Kat's just working on solutions, looking for solutions about this.
Yes, and during what you're saying, I agree with you, it's just a matter of like, we don't charge parents for payments on the printers, we don't charge parents for. You know, copying and printing off paperwork and.
If levies don't pass and things, though, then are we gonna have the parents?
What else are we gonna charge for, for education, this is, this is.
You're in the building. Well, there isn't, and we don't have. A whole lot that we're asking them to bring in and asking, I mean, you could do a suggested fee, and if they don't pay it, they don't pay it. You know, then we tend to have West Valley parents saying, can I pay for somebody else's too, you know, um, it. I don't know, it might be something to think about, or something to think about, whether that, is there.
When they ask is there, I think parents step up above and beyond, but I think when people say, hey, we need this for our classroom. Some people show up with, here's this, and it's way more than what's asked for, and it's like, holy moly, thank you. Um, I think there's something similar along the lines that could be done as far as the, the technology goes as well, like. If you don't ask, how will parents know that it's a need? If I'm getting the school coming and saying, hey, we need parents to step up and pay for stuff because our levies keep failing. I'm gonna be more inclined to say, wow, this is a burden the community needs to share. Than that, and if all you're going to do is hide the problem by not having the courage to ask parents to pay something, sure. Not everybody's gonna be able to afford it, but like you said, people are gonna pay, I'll pay for two other kids, I got no problem paying that. So, I say ask for it, because if you don't, no parent is gonna be sitting at home knowing. That this is needed.
Question, what is the amount, this is fifteen dollar fee per kid, we come out to be. We figured out it would, two, twenty-five hundred?
At the fifteen.
Yeah.
I hear it, it depends on how far we go down.
Yeah.
So if you go with the two hundred. On the fifteen, the thirty-five hundred. One thousand, three thousand, so, and we looked at it with different numbers.
Yeah.
Depends on how many kit, you know, with the six through eight, the five through eight, but the five has theirs in there, so. You know, do that times the two hundred, one to almost three hundred. We've got a really, really weird number off of what we have.
Yeah.
And.
Like around three thousand?
But right now, we're sitting with how many thousand dollars of damage sitting right now, waiting to get done.
Um, so, most of our damage is charging ports, which unfortunately come from the motherboard, which are like a hundred million dollars, and I bet there is. Eight to fifteen of those, eighty more, I don't, I don't miss. I haven't really kept track of them, it's like I say, they can just flip them over and charge from the other side. And we have computers that have keyboard damage, but they still type, but they're not great, but like I said, they work. So they're out there, and it kind of gets the mentality of, you have a brick building with a broken window, then what's gonna keep happening? So it's, I mean, I can make it work if we don't do this, it's just gonna come at the sacrifice of, we're not gonna have one to one in every classroom. And I'm used to making those hard decisions. And it stinks, but if that's the way the board wants to go, then that's what will be next year, it's just.
Yeah, so at two hundred and seventy-five, it's at fifteen, it was four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And I'm also not, there are, there is twelve devices in this school that are short. They are okay this year based on class sizes, but that comes out to about three hundred dollars. Per computer with the Chromebook license, if we were to get the classrooms back up to. The numbers that are consistent across the grade level, so I worked with the pitch blows, what is the max number of students? Um, so, I just have been shuffling computers if we needed to.
Um, then a state tech grant is five thousand.
Five thousand.
Is five thousand dollars for tech, and that's what the tech for eight hundred and something people.
Which.
Teacher tech, all tech.
Covers, not very much.
So what if we made it as like an optional fee for this next year going forward, and we see what we get out of it?
If you make it a suggest, like a optional donation versus like, or do some sort of donation drive or something for fee? Rather than saying.
Wording it that way, I think to your point, there's lots of people, me myself, that would be like, you're.
Shall we make?
Way above and beyond that, just because, but.
Upshow might be the answer. Then we would, then, the people who did deal, it was important, and maybe you want to kick in a few extra. Or somebody else, there'd be that opportunity.
And I think, you know, maybe, maybe.
And I think, you know, maybe even just a short little blurb of why we're asking for it because of all the reasons that we talked about. Not that it's not important, it's just. For a foundational educational piece of our school, I think it's hard to sell it in this light versus like. Yes, this is a general fund thing, this is what should be done in levies. We're failing levies, this is the reason why we need to get to the public and say, hey, we need them. But this is, this is the right place for this.
We wouldn't have them if it wasn't for S R. I mean, bottom line, S R bought us those computers. Remember, the idea was that the kids could bring them home. I mean, at that point, we were talking about perhaps. Closing the school, I mean, in those days. And, and so, you know, that's, that's why they were good. Goodbye at that point.
No, I'm not like, like I said, when the system we have worked. Because we have the money to put it in shoes, we just don't have the money.
No, that's what happens.
Cart in every room.
That's a landfill. And then you, then you have to try and replace those.
I think you're gonna have a lot of parents step up and help again, especially if we open it up that way.
If we, if we have it in, make it as a, as a, um, optional in the handbook, we'll worry about why. Is that where you would put it?
I had this a little bit, this starting my budget with zero in athletics. And needing, and the kids are used to getting warm-ups for the seventh and eighth grade and. I didn't have the funds, didn't know if I would. So I put it out to parents that if they could to donate. Fifteen and if they could pay for another student and the parents are, yes, they are very generous if you made it like a. A suggested donation and if you can help another kid, I think that, yeah, I don't think you'll have a problem.
Consider the word suggested, fee or suggested donation of, I mean.
Yeah, suggested.
Is that palatable to say it that way? I mean, I hear you about. It, it is, and we look carefully at the fee schedule because a basic education, we're supposed to cover those things, right? It's a tough one.
So if we put a suggested. Fee or donation suggested, not donations.
Yeah, suggested technology fee. And then the reason like Justin said.
And I think in the reason, I can say, you know, please donate this fee or welcome to donate for other students as well if you can. That's where we can slide the donate word in, but the top part would be suggested fee. And do we want to load this and bring it back and prove it with that words or can we come up with those words now and give her freedom to add the blurb?
I think we approve it based on deciding that it's suggested fee.
Do we all feel comfortable with her?
The, the principals would like to have this because it does talk about, you're monitored, right? Like this is a school, it's, we have no.
And students are starting to register now. So in infinite campus, that needs to be adjusted. Sure, because the office is working on our registration now.
I will make a motion to approve this and under section one, technology usage fee to change the wording to suggested fees. And then to give Kat the freedom to add a blurb about this donation is used for and feel free to give more if you can.
I'll second.
All notes in favor of the motion? Opposed?
So you had in your packet. Just a little word about some ideas. We haven't changed for sport fees since two thousand twelve. A lot of things in general have gone up in price, but particularly football, uh, safety equipment. Eighty percent. So it's been about, well, ten years since we started football. Every ten years, you have to replace the helmets. Every other year, they have to be reconditioned. So there's yearly costs with football when. The school purchased half of the new helmets. They decided to do half and half, which was smart because now we're reconditioning. We're purchasing half at a time, then all every other year. So they bought half of the helmets last year. We came to about thirty-two hundred dollars and then I replaced the other half, it was about fifty-two. And then reconditioning. So, um, the good news is all the helmets are the same color now. Last year, we still had some old, well, happened more white. So, um. I just listed on there is just some of the costs. So yes, you had asked the staffing, so the coaches and the A D is paid by the general fund. And then for these fees, it pays for travel, refs, jerseys, equipment, supplies. And then also I would like to build a reserve because eventually we will need new jerseys for other, other sports. Football typically won't replace them, pants and jerseys, so they get ripped and destroyed. For the game, but with basketball, our jerseys now. Six or seven. Which isn't too bad. They're in pretty good shape still. But as we're growing, I'm actually gonna need to buy new jerseys. We also almost didn't have enough. So, um, yeah, starting this year with five hundred and sixteen dollars. I just held really tight purse strings as much as I could this year and the fundraising and everybody helping and great. Parent donation for the warm-ups and just all that help. Will it end the year? With how, I'm thinking five or six thousand. So, I'm very happy. How that has worked out this year. And, um. I think, so what I did is you can see that we used to have a different fee for football versus the other sports. And we used to have a cutoff, so they pay football but then not pay basketball. So I really had to take money out of football. Now cover basketball and take money out volleyball, but like those basketball. And so what would be nice, I think, is to make the fees the same. But then you can see I added an equipment fee on the football because that's the one that has the expensive equipment. Safety equipment every season. The warm-up fee, I did put optional because I thought that could be included in registration as an optional condition to pay. For that warm-up for the basketball. Um, for cross-country. It's getting to be where almost the entire cross-country participation fee pays for the shirts. And I, being K eight, I know a lot of the kids could wear their shirt more than one season. They don't get that used and they would still fit. So parents could optionally buy a shirt. When they register. So, um, and same as what we've heard scholarships where. Scholarships for any kid who needs it and I used them this year and Brooke. Has helped with that. She said there's always, there's plenty there to help the kids. So. I don't know if you have any other questions or some of your own thoughts.
Brooke can do that kind of quietly so that kid doesn't feel like he's.
Nobody knows.
Kind of an objection, having kids to pay for.
So ninety, so I did ninety dollars per sport, so football, volleyball, basketball, ninety dollars. Um, which as football was a hundred, but I added a fifty-dollar equipment. Little guy football is a hundred and fifty. For basketball. Unless it's fifth and sixth grade because we're still, because of our gym situation. We can't really do full seasons with fifth and sixth, so that's still gonna be a half, about fifty dollars. It's not exactly half because I tried to get them a bunch of extra games, which takes extra refs. And, and intramural, like inside playing each other here, which costs. So, um, scheduling games. A lot of work to share because I think that originally the fifth and sixth would have had like three games each for girls because they have three teams. And so, um, just doing a lot of playing each other and, and scheduling more games, they were able to get five each. Doing the best we can.
Did a little background research on this and Glacier High School. Each sport is a thirty-five dollar participation fee and then a thirty-dollar spirit pack fee for sport, no matter which sport it is. That's sixty-five dollars per, for sport. As far as I can tell, K M S, there's no charge for students to have.
Yeah, I, yeah, I did.
And I did not follow up with any of the rural, rural schools or the schools, so.
Some schools like, um, particularly if they're title one schools. There is no, and they have lots of coaches extra. But we, um. The other thing is, um, at high school events, they charge. And that really helps to create the cost. You know, when you pay to see the game, um, that's very helpful. In fact, that's one of the first things. Would be asked me to charge to give them a game? Till his turn that time. So we charge for tournament. But, um. I mean, I, I am open to suggestions or ideas or if it's gonna stay the same. I just would like to know, I'm gonna start football registration Monday, um, when they start their spring practice.
So what, excuse me, so what would you project for a reserve at the end of the year, potentially based on the fee schedule?
What I would hope for is, I would hope. That we could.
If you send a football last year off in a deficit, send the helmets off.
Yeah, last year there were, money had to come out of the general fund to cover the football. That's why it was harder, I think. I was surprised I had. So I would say, sorry, I don't have that up right now, but if we did have the fees. And each sport could sustain itself with both speeds. Then more of the concessions, more of the. When we do the tournaments and things like that could go into reserve because I, we raised probably eleven thousand. And I'm thinking we'll have about five.
And your numbers, did you base it on trying to, that sports to sustain itself?
Yes, okay, yeah. By pulling money out of football for basketball and, you know, we came about even. But, but with that deficit for football, the total, and I haven't got all my bills from April yet. So I don't have the t-shirts and cross country. It's just little things to tie up, but. Um, we're at like a negative thirty-five hundred for the whole, all the sports.
But whenever you looked at the numbers adding them, like you would have enough to cover football for football, football stuff and basketball, basketball.
Am I, I figured this right? So kid wants to play football and basketball and run across country, it's gonna cost him two hundred and seventy bucks. If you've got a hundred and forty. If you got a hundred and forty for football, right? You've got ninety for basketball, right? So that's two hundred and thirty. Then you add another twenty-five for, but it's really forty for cross-country. Because you're adding a shirt now. So you got two hundred and seventy dollars with fees to play all those sports, right? Where this year, this year, it's a hundred dollars for everything, right? So we've added, so we've. We're over a hundred percent more. I mean, I understand that.
Blair, I mean, I don't have a soup, so.
We have go through, we just went through this, but without the money in the general fund to cover it and it running in a deficit and then nowhere to grab it from. It, it's very difficult and there's a lot of things to answer in there. But to, to go into the season and spending money that's not in the account yet to start football off. Collecting the football fees and then having to use those fees to cover the other sports and then knowing you're facing summer again without the money. To condition the helmets again, that the other sports shouldn't be riding on the expense. Football should be paying for itself. It is a more expensive sport and the safety factors are there and nobody argues it. I mean, I bought my kid's own helmet and it costs a lot of money for some kind of radial thing helmet, whatever the thing does, I have no idea. But, I mean, it's headed worth it, but it's, it, it, that, if more. If the fees could cover what, what it costs for that sport. And then if the fundraising can help some of these extras and be in reserve for the, um, uniforms and things, game balls and such. Then I think the program could probably be sustainable. But it's, you know, title one schools and then you get more in title three and title four. To help pay for enrichment for kids' overall life. And we don't get that much in those funds. For experience, we don't get a lot for experience not being a title one school. So we're a pay-to-play school. And. And looking at what the refs were costing and everything now, I. We, we brought up all your fees, I guess. Twenty dollars per game.
We do not.
Talk about putting that, because you know how Glacier has a booster club, like every time I sign my boys up for football. Like they designate parents to be boosters club and then they have to like go to businesses to try to donate and then you're like, they're signed to put up on the field, you know, like. Or, you know what I mean? Like maybe we could do something like that and hit a, like selling boosters.
I do. Option on there for people to help in that way, just somewhat.
Yeah, I changed, um, the registration form. To, to add where parents, when you register your kids for a sport, that you could choose one area to help in for these fundraisers. Because really, I'm it.
Right, and I'd love. Committee, because it needs two parents to handle it and you're like either a gold member or platinum member or a bronze member. I mean, it's like five hundred, a thousand or two thousand and throw it at the school and he can do whatever he wants, but it has to stay within a football program. Looks like the football booster club and then there's like a basketball booster club. Like if we could maybe try to set that up so then. I know that would be super helpful for you, like the coaches can use it for whatever, you know, like.
Yeah, and like, you know, I was thinking they'd have some money left, they were hoping to get a tackle done. Two thousand dollars and I had to tell them.
Right, because I have no idea if I have any money.
I mean, because businesses don't throw. I mean, I'm sure, you got a lot of kids, a lot of business owners. Going through it, you were adjusting, said it wasn't making money off the fees really, but the piece that you could adjust off of it, we don't want it making money. Is the thing.
Right.
But adjusting the amount on the fee of the things that are more volatile. So coming up with a number that you think is sustainable for a while. And then the helmet conditioning and the fees for football. And then the skirts, those are the things that seem to go up, they're more volatile. And to be able to just change that without changing the whole.
Oh, right, so like the equipment, the reason that I was gonna raise. It to just a hundred and thirty maybe, but thinking that the, you know, helping people to see what that extra is for. The footballs for the sports equipment, so it plus forty. But the other thing is if it keeps going up eighty percent. I mean, I don't, it's gonna be hard to come back and like raise the rates all the time. But if it's an equipment fee and parents can see what it's for, um, I think it's more transparent that way. But, I mean, if, if the board feels like it would be appropriate to put a cap. And we could see how that works, you know, for a year where the bottom line is, I feel confident that. You know, we can continue. Confident that, you know, we can continue to fundraise and that we have. Hope like I have this year and maybe more next year, people will know kind of what. What we're doing with concessions and fundraising and that. Real three tournament, which. But. I'm open. But it's not paid for itself right now.
But when I, when I, you know, when I point out the two hundred and seventy dollars as opposed to a hundred dollars, you know, we almost. How things are going now, I mean, you go to the grocery store and you you get one bag of groceries instead of two for my money. Everything, everything is going up and people accept that. To some extent, I and they will accept this and and the idea of it being. That that, you know, that even the kids save, especially football, if they're going to play football, you gotta give them good help, that's for sure, so all those. Those safety issues enter in. I'm glad it elected. Kick in some money for.
I mean, we are proposing like for somebody who wants to play football and everything else, we're proposing like a from a hundred dollars to two hundred and seventy, so a hundred and seventy increases. Somebody's not playing football and they're doing like volleyball and basketball and. In cross-country, we're increasing it by about a hundred and forty-five dollars over than the seventy-five that it started at. Seems like a jump, I'm not saying that parents won't pay it, I just. Yeah, I love an idea, we need a booster club, but what we decide here, but I think that's a great way of bringing in not only. Parent involvement, because they can certainly with their own businesses, support the athletics a lot, but also bring in other. Other businesses across the whole valley that haven't even thought about donating to elementary schools.
My, my husband works in the Evergreen area and they have two thirties. We are. Wolverine, sorry. We are Wolverines or whatever, and they have business sponsors and they wear those shirts every Friday and I thought, what a great idea, and I'm like. Something like that, but.
What is that scholarship? Not gonna say, you say on this that your scholarship, like, so what is this scholarship capacity if she hasn't given me? It's not bearable, like if it's not bearable and you have a lot of people saying. You know, and and people will come forward and say, I can take so much of this, right, a lot of people come forward with what they do have versus the nothing, but.
I don't know how much exactly, I've just been pulled. It's there.
And this is all involved sharing the nets with PE, this is.
Yeah, I mean, and and that's. That's something that's. Not clear. I guess, you know, what happens, because we went to do a game, a what final game, and we couldn't get the net to work. We're like, oh, my gosh, if I'm panicking, we have to coach try a parent try. Put that away and in the meantime, for the whole next twenty-four hours, I'm thinking, how are we going to afford new poles for a net? Well, then when the PE teacher went in to work on it, it worked. But gave me a little scare and it makes me think about some of those things. Sharing that. Or paying it, I don't.
Is there no cap on this?
There was not, no, there wasn't. You know, like per child.
Most expensive one is football, right?
Yes.
We just added an equipment fee on the football since that's what's taking the most of it right now. Oh, she's got a fifty-dollar equipment fee on.
Close to any of that, maybe if there is like the cap version of it, wouldn't be a bad thing to add, I don't know if it's like. You know, a hundred dollars cap if somebody plays football, if it's. Something less than that, if they don't play football and then if they're doing individual sports, then it's still like the ninety dollars, which seems. Seems like you should do a cap some sort of two seventy. Because then you're still going to collect from individual sports, but then. Family's going to be like, okay, that's I can for the year, that's what I can do and it's easier to see, but.
How many kids do?
Right, we'll spend it better, but then we'll get a booster club, though, you're making more money anyway.
Well, how many kids do play all of them? I mean, how many kids are going to pay into?
From earlier, like the anticipated. How many kids are interested?
In all of them at once, so I mean, so.
Yeah, it doesn't involve some kids that are in all of them.
Yeah, so who does all of them?
So they, oh, how many do all the sports? Oh, I see.
I'm just saying, how many would be eligible to pay the two hundred and seventy bucks if they?
So. For volleyball. We we did not, well, I'm just saying, we did not have a. Big amount of girls that also did basketball, like it was pretty divided, maybe it's like, but for football. Almost all the football kids. Yeah. And so then there was no fee. Nathalie and Kyla, yeah, we do get, and Marion, they come over and they do pay the fee.
So they give us a hundred bucks and we support the rest of it for them. Right?
But it looks like they were just ten out of district, right?
Yeah. Which was a pretty good amount considering the size of Kyla.
What about the homeschool kids, they come into?
They have them, I don't know if we had a football. But yeah, they know they can come and play and we do get them periodically, it's usually one or two.
But we hit, we, they pay the fee.
Yes.
But then.
So let's just put a cap on it then.
Yeah, I just made a rough estimate of what I thought would be. So if somebody just did football and basketball, though, didn't do cross-country. It'd be two hundred and thirty, like a reasonable, like two hundred dollar cap. For that, and then they decided to do cross-country, which I don't think there is very many, ever maybe a couple, if I can.
The numbers go down as you get older and greater.
Yeah, especially, yeah. Cross-country side of things and then football players are separate from April anyway. And then a non-football thing, if they did two, let's say volleyball and basketball, it'd be a hundred and eighty. With the capital one fifty. And then individually, keep with your numbers.
Yes, I will try anything.
Yeah, so you're going to do two different caps then, not just one?
Yeah, cap with football and cap, or maybe we do one cap and then you add. The fifty-dollar equipment fee, no matter what, so one, it's a cap for all sports and then the football fifty-dollar equipment fee, that makes more sense.
I think that'd be easier to track than.
That makes more sense, yeah.
Well, if you stayed at go next two hundred, you do hundred and fifty cap.
Yep, and then if you do football, fifty-dollar equipment fee, which is. The same either way, if you do ninety versus adding fifty versus.
It's better, might not get you the whole. Thing, but it it should.
Oh, it'll, it'll help. I'm not saying I was stressing. I didn't want to have to come to you for money at the end of this season.
And then, yeah, put a committee together for a booster club. Yeah, no, we need to. I think put a committee together for a booster club too, because I think a lot of businesses would help on that.
So. I'll make a motion to approve this with a cap of a hundred and fifty dollars. Aside from the mandatory equipment fee for football.
Which is fifty dollars.
Cap of a hundred and fifty with fifty-dollar. Equipment fee.
Okay, we add, we put a committee together for a booster club?
Yeah, I think you have to have a separate baking account to make a five-roll.
One C three.
Yeah, I have a one C three, you know what I mean, because then they can write it off on their taxes and business love to do that.
The PTO just did all that for West Valley.
Yeah, they have five-one-C three, so we can do that, I mean, I'm down for helping for sure with that.
So should we? Shall we make a motion on on the athletic fees and then?
That we don't have to have the booster, just keep it what Justin said.
The booster thing. Later, but it's not anything.
No, because when it comes to that, we'll have to approve the. Financial status of it and it works, so that'll be a separate thing.
Okay, let's just do the, so we're going to. Increase the athletic fees for twenty-three, twenty-four with cap of a hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-dollar equipment fee for football. Is that correct? Is that the right motion?
Yeah, I'll second Justin's motion.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? We hire certified staff, we have, we have a. List here, a certified staff and a certified staff. That we need to. We hire. At this time, even though contracts will change after the negotiations. But we'll hire, hire them now, it is. And 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 it it may be, you know. Change what has to be changed after negotiations, is that correct? Yes, yes, okay.
Motion to hire all the people.
Whoever they might be.
How does an asterisk mean?
Is there a second? I'll second. All right, all those in favor? Oh, we need discussion on that. I, discussion. We're good on that, okay, change June school board meeting to June nineteen. Now, I understand we've done this before. When Cindy Foley was here, we always had to change the June meeting also because.
Yep, so in, so the week. So June twelve, I guess, the week before, there's the Clark's Conference. That initially I wasn't planning on attending, but Cindy Foley highly suggested that I. Do it, so the first, I think, two or three days are directed at New Clark's. And then the other three days are just different trainings that. There's like black dawn training, there's budget training, there's food service training, transportation, it's everything, so it's.
The worst on hell, Cecily.
Um, so this year it's in Fairmont, last year it was in Beale, they just moved around.
Fairmont's just out of you, right?
And so last year I did the meeting virtually, which is a challenge, but. If okay, so we just move it by a week, then that would be.
I guess that's our options, we can. We can do Zoom again, or we can go ahead and. And move it one week forward. Which. Affect too much.
Yeah, it's a lost thing, it's. We either have an impact in school about anything, okay, just wanted to make sure we're gonna affect the ability for certain people, but. I mean, if it was easy at our school for some people, but not. It's easy if it was a week or two right here, but. Good reason to do that.
So we need. Motion to change the school board meeting. From the second Monday in the month to the third Monday in the month, June nineteen. I'll make a motion to change that to June nineteenth for the June school board meeting. Okay, any, any discussion on that? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, this one, call it the election. Do we want, I guess, do we want to do it again, go for it with and and. Get everything in on time and actually use do the mail ballot event. We we still need the money. Oh, sorry, you're right, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, so, well, like I said, I won't be supporting the next levy election for the reasons that I stated, but I also won't vote against one either. And I know the school absolutely needs a levy to pass. But you guys didn't take action on the April tenth meeting. You had time to have called a special meeting and canceled the levy then before ballots were mailed out. But because the ballots were mailed out, I mean, my parents didn't know this was canceled until I told them, they didn't get the text message. You didn't notify people, so there is a great deal of people in this community who, whether they voted for it or not. Have received a ballot and either they threw it away or maybe they voted, they have no clue that you canceled this thing. And because of that, if they get a second ballot in the same year. Those, that's not going to spur anyone who didn't participate to participate in a positive way, it's going to make them vote against it. They're going to wonder what the hell happened, they're going to wonder what is the school board doing, what is the school doing, it will look bad. So I urge you, if you want to have a levy pass later, to write this thing off. Accept your mistakes and move on and try it next year and pay some attention. But I do not suggest you run a levy.
Thank you, thanks. Well, there's the, there's the two options. I mean, we. Or, you know, we can go for the levy or we can wait until next year. I don't know what it, the chances.
I feel like, I mean, I guess in general, I I lean towards waiting until next year, obviously the funds are needed soon, but. I think, you know, giving us more time to, you know, market it, obviously. You know, give time for some of the confusion. To settle out, you know, do it on the normal calendar. Next year with potentially the other elections, I think, you know, levy in the middle of the summer is going to be. You know, it's unusual, right, so I think we'd have a better chance of. Success, just, you know, following the normal schedule next year.
I agree, I do also, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Dan.
Dan, I agree with what you said, that the community needs to know what the needs are at West Valley too. Like I think parents support the school, they just don't know what is needed. That I think that gives more time to get the information out there.
If you want to generate some buzz, cancel the athletics. I guarantee you, people get far more participation in the next levy election. Yeah. Great way to get your message out.
I guess the chance of this levy election pass, this levy passing at this point is not great. I mean, even if we. Beat the bushes, try to do everything we can to promote it. The chances of the passing is not great, so what we run the risk is of running another election. And it won't pass, we're going to be without the three hundred thousand dollars. Whether we do run a levy or whether we don't. And that's kind of a negative way to look at it maybe, but I think that might be one way to look at it, and so. Our chance of of getting it in the summer is less than it will be. Come next spring. With voters.
Yeah.
And that's my thought on it, I don't know.
I think there's a lot of education that needs to be learned by all, so that. It goes through without any hiccups along the way too, I think, you know, there's. Obviously, the deadline issues and stuff like that that we're overseeing, but what else, you know, we need to, we put a little bit more effort into making sure this goes off perfect.
Yes, I agree.
And I don't know that we have that ability to do in a short amount of time.
Well, especially when we, I mean, our teachers will be at a school and then, you know, they were fake. They push for this levy, they they didn't support, they did. And and without, without, and without them being in school and able to support it like they did. I I I think our chances of promoting it are about, are just not good.
Well, and I think a lot of people walked in and dropped it off, and I think if you ask everyone to throw their stamp on it and mail it in, there's a lot of people are like, oh, this is a stamp. Have to put a stamp on here too, never mind. Or they could just walk it in and drop it off in in July fifteenth of. Summer, is somebody going to be sitting here with their hand open or all summer long waiting for people to drop something off, I just don't know. We're going to get less returned, I think.
We'd have, we'd have the, because the office girls come in and and sit there for a couple of days, that's not enough. That that's not enough, we, we just, we, right now, we we've got an opportunity. During a usual election, they can, they can drop their kids off and drop the ballot off. We're missing that. during a usual election, they can, they can drop their kids off and drop the ballot off. We're missing that. So even though we're desperate for the money, we can make it live, live by for this year. I think, I think whether we pack, we run a levy election, we don't run a levy election, we're gonna have to come, we're, we're gonna have to deal with a lack, a lack of the three hundred thousand. I don't think we'll let it pass.
Yeah, just that, you know, the one thing that's always stood out very clearly to me in education is that voters don't always remember the outcome, but they remember the ask. And so, um, you know, especially, I, I was a school district five resident for quite some time. And, I mean, there was a time there where they were coming over and over and over and over, and what you heard from neighbors was, you know, my taxes keep going up, like, they keep asking for my money, but my taxes are going up. Levis hadn't passed, you know, like, bond hadn't passed, but their taxes were going up, and so they're equating the ask with the outcome of their taxes and not the outcome of the actual bond or levy at hand. And so I think being very strategic with the, the amount, the frequency, like, really planning so that you're not having to come again in two, three, four years. Being very strategic and very mindful, I think, would do the school a lot more good in the long run, and certainly would make the requests more palatable to voters as well.
We could put on the ballot, hey, we screwed it up last night.
It's hard to get the message out to anybody. I mean, like you said, Dan, you know, how you get the message out to people anymore?
You're gonna have to make the hard cuts that cause outrage amongst parents. Bring the parents in and get them talking, and then that gives you the opportunity to explain why you had to make the hard cuts. Instead, you're cutting everything just little bit by little bit, and you're killing it all. When you could basically just take a whole chunk and just cut it right off, generate the outrage, generate the discourse, dinner, generate the dialogue, and then you can absolutely be like, hey, your tax has been going up, but the levies haven't been passing. So you want your kids to be able to, you know, have the latest helmets? Guess what? Vote for a school levy. Vote to give them that opportunity.
Because when Columbia Bowl got that cyber attack within a month, they passed a, um,
Technology.
Technology levy, within a month. That's, that's not a bad idea, as much as I.
Yeah, one other thing, though, like, so maybe that's option number two, right? Because that impacts kids really negatively, like, I mean.
There's, it's, we're impacting them anyway.
For sure, for sure, you know, but as parents, like, when we put our kids in sports, it's because we want character development. Like, yes, we want skills, yes, we want fun, yes, we want play, but we want them to grow as a person, you know, that's, that's why we have elementary sports, middle school sports. You know, so if we can start doing stuff on social media, like, tech has been doing a bang-up job about getting more out, but like, growing our presence, so putting stuff in the social media, or on the newsletter. I mean, we should honestly, I feel, be putting board notices, like, board meeting next Monday in school, in school newsletters. Following up after our meetings, like, meetings can be found on the West Valley School YouTube site. Like, and so really giving parents a chance to kind of interact. It, it's also very easy, granted, like, the video quality isn't great. But it's also politics for the poll, like, important sections, so maybe, you know, here's what our data's looking like. Throw that in Canva, put it on infographic. This is how big our deficit is, and this is why. Put it in an infographic, pulling sound bites from our board meetings of like, really critical points, like, the five-minute blurb of, here's what was hot this board meeting. Put it out on social media, make it ax, like, make it accessible to parents, because, you know, it's easy for us, like, we're trying to keep our kids fed, we're working, like, we're making them do their homework, we're doing the nine-to-five. But we're not in the classroom, we're not, you know, at these meetings, and so it's easy to miss that, and it's not that parents don't care. It's just that they don't have the information, you know, like what Dan's saying. Also that, yes, yes.
The mailings.
Yes.
To quarter.
Right.
But they're not reading on this.
No, a hundred percent, you know, but that's where maybe we pull in Micah Drew with the beacon, maybe that's what we pull in.
Beacon's gone. It's not, it's not in the newsstands anymore.
Okay, got it. Okay, but still very much live online, you know, but utilizing those resources, tapping into social media, doing targeted ads through Facebook, it takes like ten bucks, and you can hit a lot of extra people, like, just doing small things with very little money, tapping into community resources to really start to expand our reach. You know, I, I think there's a lot we can do with a little, if that makes any sense.
But that's gonna take some planning.
Yeah.
And, and right now, you know, we're, we're in a time crunch, you know, we've, we've got months. But till July eighteen, this election to come to pass, and, and the things you're saying are, are great, but there, there, there are things that need to occur during the school year, too. Summertime people are now developing. Correct.
So, so I think that's where, sorry, and I do not wanna comment here this meeting at all. I think that's where we, like, recognize in the levy not looking promising right now. Use that to really strategically plan our approach for next year, and starting this summer or August, you know, whatever, to just trickle that out there and really be targeted with what we're doing and how we're doing it and working as a team, because there's a lot of resources there, there's a lot of people that can do a little to amount to a lot, to tell that story and to really generate awareness within the community without having to spend money that we don't have.
I think we have a whole year to plan for next year. We have moments to do it this year, so.
I you phrase this positively.
Sure, I want to. Motion to not run a levy.
Yeah, it's make the motion.
Motion to run a levy next year.
That can't do that yet. Although that is hopefully what'll happen, but.
Can you just not, not make a motion?
Can't you just deny it?
Or table, how about tabling it, or?
Can't you make a motion and then nobody votes for it, and so that?
Motion, how would we just motion to deny? Deny the levy election, that positive, is that almost positive?
Yeah, I think motion to deny the levy election this year and put efforts into a better, more organized effort in the future.
Okay, how about that? Motion to deny a levy election for the near future, for July, perhaps, we should do that. Okay, motion to deny the, the levy election for July, and then and, put efforts.
Efforts and education into running a levy in the future.
Alright, any more discussion? All those in favor? Anybody not in favor? I said I, okay. Now, setting of the general fund levy, this is a that the amount that was, that was on the supposition that we were gonna call for a levy election. And so that really becomes an, an invalid item right now, isn't it? Um, how do you say that?
Motion to cancel setting the general levy amount based on previous vote.
There you go.
Denying the levy election.
I'll second.
Alls in favor? Alright, reorganize the board. I've gotta say, I would, I would, um, if anybody else wants this job, they got it. And I, I the only thing that I probably have more than anybody else in this board, except maybe Gretchen, is that, you know, I am retired, so I have time. I've spent a lot of time running back and forth to school, maybe more than I needed to, but I, I am always available. I'm not trying to be out there making living, where everybody else on this board is. But I would, you know, if anybody else wants it, it's
I'll make a motion to elect Marilyn Headstrom as chairperson for willingly or not.
Well, you know, one thing about it, as you, you go along, you learn how to. And, and I was served on the board for three years, but it wasn't until I became chairperson that I really, really connected with the board, and I, and you learn so much as, and anyway, I, I would, I I would accept it, if, as long as everybody is willing to be kind and patient, so, okay. All in favor of that motion?
I'm stuck in it, just because you seem to have more time than the rest of us, I would say for sure. When it comes to the time that goes into being the chairperson.
Oh, I'm all in favor?
Aye.
All, all, um, against? Oh, okay, Gretchen Epstein's and Justin Wood's name, okay. Now we need to elect a vice chairperson?
I'll make a motion to elect.
Justin does a good job as vice chair, he's, he's got more experience than anyone else on this board. And I make a motion for Justin as vice chair.
Any, any discussion? Alright, I'll, I'll move into favor.
No, it's gonna be a second.
Gave me the second. Do I have a second to elect Justin as vice chairperson? So that motion fails for lack of a second, please.
I'll make a motion to, uh, elect Stephanie as vice chair.
There's a second to that? I guess I can, I can second, I looked it up, and as board chair, I can send it a motion. I can't make, but I so I would second most they have Stephanie as a vice chair. Because she, because Stephanie has a lot of time, um, spending a lot of time on her computer, and so she's easy to make connection with. That'd be my reason for that. Any more discussion on that?
I think, in, I mean, in discussion, I think, obviously, there's been a lot of difficulties that this board has gone through, especially recently. I also feel as though this board has not necessarily acted in the best interest of the kids in the community. I want to get that back on track. Boards are individual people that are never gonna be on the same page on everything, and I think that's, goes without saying. Um, but I think getting back to what's best interest of the kids is of, of most importance. I encourage everybody on the board to attend board training. I encourage everybody on the board to review our code of ethics for board members. I think that's extremely important. I did bring a copy of all those. If everybody wants them, it is policy one, five, one, one. Have those down if you want. That's what I thought. But I, I personally feel that there has been policies that have been broke. I think there is code of ethics that have been broke. And this board in general needs to put a large emphasis on getting back on track and earning the public's trust.
But, you know, I've gotta say, there's been mistakes that have been made. And I would, you know, it's really, it's really a tough position. You, you know, you take a school board member, and, and the things that you're expected to do as a school board member are not things that you're trained to do in real life. I mean, there, there's, and, and yet, when you don't, if something is not quite right, then, you know, automatically, the, the threat of lawsuit moves. You know, which is one reason why we can't have trouble even getting people going to education period right now. Because they're all afraid of doing something wrong, getting sued. And, and, I mean, I think a lot of the situ, a lot of the countries that way, but in any case, that, you know, you put somebody in a position, and then they just do their very best. And we were presented with a lot of situations this, this past year that have been really odd, and I, I just it, it's just tough when you expect a person to be able to rise back. But what we need is to work together as a team, and, you know, to encourage each other and work on what's doing right first. And so I guess we need better communication for starters. So I just would ask everybody to read their emails every day. I mean, at least open that with their West Valley, because at least we can communicate that way. That would be that'd be my, my hope.
I have a public comment.
Sure.
You said communicate and open your emails. When is the last time that, um, you communicated with Gretchen or Justin via email? As a board chair, to the vice chair, or to that trustee?
Gretchen, I, I have, um, so I can communicate with Jen, with Gretchen by phone, and I know that's not the best way, because it's a, um, it's a business phone, and she doesn't always get the, the message. I guess I haven't I haven't really felt the need to communicate.
I think you can go back to what's on the actual agenda on the election, too.
Right. That's, anyway, I, I just, okay, I'll just say that I, I will make a commitment to communicate better with.
One other public comment, when you guys were being talked to, the three of you, by the attorney from the MTSBA, was any of that ever related to the board as a whole, or just the three of you?
It, it, the fact of the matter was, any?
Single.
No, it wasn't. It was only two, because any time that you have three board members present, it becomes a public, open meeting. So that, it, and that is a real problem with school board policy. It's a policy that's set by the I don't know, state or the feds, but you cannot, you can't, if you, if you communicate between three members, as, as part of from the agenda or announcing your business meeting, then you've got to, you know, you've got to call an open meeting. So what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do?
You're maybe not on both sides of open meetings.
But I do have an email from Deborah Silk saying that she's talked to Marilyn, and she's talked to Stephanie, that she's talked to Jeff, I don't own question that she did those individually. I don't think that all three of you are in the same room with her. I don't think that at all, but none of that is related to the rest of us at all.
As the vice chair.
And so when it comes to communication, yes, communication does need to change, or has to be some.
I personally have reached out to Deborah, so she does respond when I reach out to her, but my understanding is, I believe, most of her communication goes direct to Marilyn on stuff, but if I have questions, I do reach out to the MTSBA legal board, just because that's what we have to go to.
And, and, and everything goes through the board chair, which is not very fair. I do not like that, because it places so much responsibility on the board chair. You know my computer? Um, skills are less than ideal. So, I mean, when, when I, when things began to unravel. And we had to have some, some counsel, that's when I reached out Stephanie. Because she's on the computer all day. And so she, and she, her computers are great. That's the reason. I need, I needed help. You know, you, you, and you only get one help, because if you get, go reach out with two or three help, then you end up with four.
But you didn't feel comfortable going to the vice chair, who's been on the board two years. You went to someone for eight months. I think we go back to the.
I think, I.
I think Robert's rule of a board meeting, you two aren't allowed to speak only if the chair is. I don't know if you guys know that. You should read up on your policies. And I think I can cite like four West Valley policies that you broke. So. Brush up on the policy in the West Valley handbook, please.
Hey, thanks, Krista. I think, I think now this meeting is. We, let, let's go ahead and hold on now, still. On the, the vice chairperson.
I'm pretty obvious.
There is a.
Happening here.
There is a motion on the floor. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, all those opposed.
Aye.
All right. Next thing is to appoint a clerk. And I think that's, somebody want to make a motion?
Cecilia wants that. I will make a motion to appoint Cecilia as clerk and thank her for her services and all of her extra work recently. And just greatly appreciate everything you do.
As I think, her evaluation. Yeah, I think we all felt that way. We gave, we gave our clerk a vote of confidence, I think, in, in, in the evaluation session. As what we should have. So with that, we have a second for that. All is in favor?
Aye.
I, opposed. Um, budget. So Cecilia, we are clerk. And, um, budget expenditure line item detail, we've looked at, we have that in our position here. A budget director update? Well, we, we sort of moved that up to the. To Carrie's report, and she gave her report after the technology director. I moved that up so we didn't have to do that. So we've already done that report, right, Carrie? I moved, yeah, that's right. But we have a motion on the floor to appoint a clerk.
Yeah.
Or we did that. Now we're into the, now we're into the budget expenditure line item detail.
I just stopped that. So, and that's for review. So I just sent it to you. I didn't realize the link didn't work. You guys can do that.
Oh, yeah, it's just. All right, all in favor?
Aye.